Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome all of you to your Board of Supervisors' room. Could you please do the roll call?
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragosa.
Here.
And Supervisor Foy.
Supervisor Foy is absent today and let us know that last week. We have a moment of inspiration and we have Reverend Pat Coulter from the Fire and Sheriff's Department chaplain, and welcome here. And sorry about your left arm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Distinguished members of the board, when I was invited by Supervisor Foy to come out here and deliver a moment of inspiration...
Excuse me one minute, sir. We're getting a lot of feedback here. Could we get things turned down a little bit?
You got it.
I just want to make sure we can hear you properly.
It should be fine.
All right, let's try it.
Give it a try.
Well, once again, when Supervisor Foy invited me to come out here and deliver this moment of inspiration, I really wasn't sure what he was talking about. So I went on your website and I went back six months and I watched all of the three and four-minute moments of inspiration that have been delivered by all of the wonderful people that you have invited to speak here. And I have to tell you, I truly, truly was impressed and inspired by all of the wonderful things that are going on in this county that we most of the time don't even know about, that we rarely see. And I was reminded of a little story of a little boy who was sitting out in front of a large office building, a blind boy. He had no money. He had a little bucket in front of him and he had a sign in front of him. And the sign said, "I'm blind. Please help." And people would go by and they'd drop a coin or two into the bucket and they'd move on. At the end of the day, he had a couple of dollars. And then one day, he heard some footsteps come by and they stopped, dropped a couple of coins in the bucket, and they took his sign, turned his sign over, and somebody wrote something different on the back of his sign, put the sign back, and walked away. For the rest of the day, everybody who came by, that young boy dropped a couple of coins into the bucket. And at the end of the day, the boy had made more money than he had ever made before in his life. And so toward the end of the day, he heard those same footsteps coming by and he said, "Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Are you the man who changed my sign?" And the gentleman said, "Yes, I am." He said, "What did you write?" He said, "I said the same thing that you said, only I said it a little bit differently. You said, 'I'm blind, please help me.'" I wrote on there, "It's a beautiful day in Ventura County, but I can't see it." And the message is, there are so many things that are going on in this county that we don't see. We rarely see them, except for the wonderful work that you and your website folks do by putting up these little messages. I saw messages talking about people who reach out to those with brain injuries. I saw stories in there about Boy Scouts who are into graffiti abatement. I saw all kinds of other stories that wouldn't come out were it not for the wonderful work that you do as members of this Board of Supervisors. And so if I were to offer a blessing, it would be something like, "May God bless each and every one of you and those you love. And may God continue to smile on this little slice of heaven that we call Ventura County."
Thank you very much, Reverend Coulter. Would you be kind enough to lead us in our pledge of allegiance here today?
Yes, I will. Will you all please stand, put your right hand over your heart, face the flag, and join me. I pledge allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was very nice. It's almost like he gave us thanks for our moment of, the many moments of inspiration we've been able to have here. It's really fortunate. Minutes of the meeting of June 17th and 18th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the minutes. We need to have a vote on that. It's very controversial, but the minutes have been approved, four to zero, and we're now at the agenda review. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. Speaking of controversial, we don't have anything on the agenda review today. Agenda page six, number 20, there's a revised agenda title due to revised board letter that removed the recommendations to waive county policy against interest payment, late fees, and attorney's fee provisions, and added that non-material changes must be approved by county council. The revised agenda, board letter, exhibit one and two have all been distributed and posted to the web. On agenda page 11, item 46, there's a revised agenda title to reflect the full name of the budget unit, name of CEO, special accounts and contributions, other charges. In addition, a comment letter from Kathy Brudnicki has been distributed and posted. Item number 48, the new county internet website. There's a PowerPoint presentation that's been distributed and posted to the web. And then finally, item 61, we request postponement and removal from the agenda. And that's it.
Okay.
What was the last one?
Item 61.
Sixty-one.
The wireless one.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I add one? Just on the closed session agenda, item 50, we're asking to withdraw that from the agenda.
All right.
For closed session. Anticipated litigation. We don't need the closed session.
All right. Board members, anything else on the agenda review?
I just wanted to make a comment on item 16, but other than that...
All right. And I'll have a comment where I'll pull out item 10, so both off the consent calendar. With that, we need a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
She'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And the agenda has been approved. We're at the consent items 10 through 46. And Supervisor Parks, you want to go ahead and do your comment?
Yes, thank you. This is an item that gives permission to exceed $100,000 in 124 annual service agreements. And just looking through it, for example, item four is for close to $3 million in technology services items. And then also, the chart on exhibit one shows about another $5 million with computer support services and IT professional services. And it just made me think that here is an example of about $7 million of IT-type of services spread among many of the departments, just through this one item of getting permission for going over $100,000. And it just made me realize how much of our budget is in IT kind of things. And I would just ask that we are able to give them some information, perhaps with a pie chart, that shows how much of our operating costs are, and I guess in some cases, capital costs, are just IT. I think that would be informative. And so I just wanted to bring this out. And it's something we've seen grow, you know, over the last decade or so, and it would just be a good piece of information to have.
Thank you, Supervisor. Yes, we'd be happy to do that, and we'll bring that back in short order. And I, yes, I know that our IT department works very hard to look at those things that it can do in-house and what things it doesn't make sense for them to do, and they contract out those items out, and they do it through a very rigorous purchasing process of RFPs and so forth.
I think that'd be a good presentation to have, to have an understanding of what we are doing and how we are remaining competitive where we are.
Great. Thank you.
And recommendation 10, and the consent calendar is the recommendation of Supervisor Foy to reaffirm the county of Ventura's commitment to the Ventura County Medical Resource Foundation and the boomerang campaign. And we have Michael Planet and Victoria Jump here. Maybe we do and maybe we don't. We don't. Okay, great. But, so, anyway, that's as part of our consent calendar also. So we need a motion for consent calendar items?
Move consent.
Moved and seconded. And the consent calendar has been approved. We are now at item eight, public comments, and our first public comment speaker, grand jury appreciation, and Dr. Gail Bionkino?
Bionkino.
Did I...
Bionkino.
Okay, great.
I don't have to pronounce it right for you to be able to speak.
Yeah, it's fine. Thank you. First of all, I would like to introduce the grand jury, 2012, 2013, to you. We've met all of you in chambers. We just have a few comments, and I actually am here on behalf of Jay Whitney, the foreman. Today, he wasn't able to make it, and I am the pro tem, so I get to do this. I am from Westlake Village, and we represent many of the different cities in the county. And we would just like to give you a few of our comments, our overview of the year. On behalf of all of us, I would like to announce that this is the first year ever we've had an electronic version of the final report for the grand jury. This report is, will be delivered to the Honorable Brian J. Back, presiding judge of the Superior Court on Monday, July 1st. Sorry, I'm nervous. At the Hall of Justice. In addition to saving the county thousands of dollars in printing, binding, and transportation costs, the report is a live document that can be amended by posting the required and the requested responses to the reports. Another benefit is the time and labor that has saved GSA, and they give their wholehearted thanks to us for not making them, bind them this year, print them and bind them. So we would thank you for indulging us on presenting it in an electronic form. The major takeaway for the residents of Ventura County is that they have access to this document and all the reports on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week basis. So if there is a report that they are particularly interested in, they can read the report when it first comes out, and then they can reread and see the responses that were gained from that report. Another achievement of the grand jury that we are quite proud of is that this term, we instituted a Spanish-language complaint form for the citizens of the county. This was approved by Judge O'Neill last fall, and that way, all of our citizens have access to complaint form. Along with this achievement, I would like to tell you that these two people here, Garnetta and Frank, instituted something that we started last year, which was a presentation to the appellate jury once a week. This was a great tool for recruiting new applicants to the grand jury. This year, we had double what we had last year, and last year, we worked hard at it as well. So these two people did a great job in presenting. And as you well know, there is a video that was produced, and they use that in conjunction with their little speech that they do. And we have a captive audience. Those people don't go anywhere. At this time, the foreman Jay Whitney and I, and many of the members of the jury, would request that the board raise the per diem for the grand jurors beginning July 1st, 2014. No current juror will benefit from this change, and we believe that it will facilitate participation by more residents, not just applicants with independent means. Many jurors reach into their own pockets to subsidize their service on the grand jury. We recommend adopting, Jay and I recommend adopting, the current federal jury per diem rate of $40 a day. We must say a special thanks to our county counsel, Leroy Smith, for his generosity in both time and expertise. He was ever mindful that we are free of liability for investigations and our reports. Thank you. And finally, we are pleased to accept the grand jury's thanks to the Board of Supervisors for your continued support. I can state without a doubt that what we've learned as members of the grand jury is that we wouldn't trade Ventura County for any other county. Thanks for the memories. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for taking the time to come and present these comments. But to all of you, thank you very much for your service. I know I speak for all of the supervisors, but one of the key elements that make a democracy function well is this degree of openness that's out there. And the grand jury certainly plays a key part of having the citizens feel like there is a place to go to take their complaints, there's a place for things to be looked at, there's a place for citizens to express opinions through you. And so thank all of you for playing that valuable part in our democracy and for your service, and we'll certainly carefully consider everything that you said here this morning.
Thank you. And we would like to invite you to read the final report that will be out on the first.
Great.
Always do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your service.
Helping to save oaks and thousand oaks, too.
Great ideas.
Okay, our next speaker during public comment is Mr. Carol Dean Williams. Good morning.
You ready to show the video?
Yes.
Because that's a crime.
Well, I'm not going to take an incident report.
Okay.
Because this isn't criminal in nature.
Hey, why did you show up?
Because they said that you're here and you've been asked to leave and that you're not leaving. So that's why I'm here now.
So...
So I'm going to ask you to leave.
Are you the Sergeant Weeks or different Weeks?
I'm Sergeant Weeks.
You're Sergeant Weeks.
Yes.
So why were you told to come out?
I was told that you were here and that possibly videotaping and that there was something going on.
Was there any crime? Did they report a crime?
Potentially.
Oh, they didn't report a crime?
No. So here's where we're at. They've asked you to leave. They've told me, their security has told me that you are no longer welcome in here. So I'm going to ask you to leave now. And if you refuse, then you'll be trespassing.
Oh, we'll be, huh?
Uh-huh.
You're just still as corrupt as always, aren't you?
I'm going to ask you to leave now.
Yeah.
Or I will arrest you. I don't have a problem with you.
And you're not going to write up an incident report, huh?
I'm not going to write up an incident report. There's no need to.
I want to know what they told you.
You have a civil issue with them. You don't have a right to know what they told you.
Okay, civil issue then. What are you involved in a civil issue for?
Because it's turning criminal if you're refusing to leave.
Oh, it's now turning criminal.
If you're refusing to leave, yes.
I'm not refusing to leave.
Okay.
I just wanted to document you.
But there was a potential crime, so that's why I'm here.
Oh, there was. Oh, now there's a potential crime. Now tell me, Sergeant...
It's time to go.
Tell me what the potential crime was.
We'll finish this outside.
Tell me what the potential crime was.
Let's finish this outside.
Come on. Come on. Because that's a crime.
Well, I'm not...
All right. If you are listening closely, this is Sergeant Weeks in a uniform with a badge and a gun filled with hate. The first words out of his mouth, "He's not going to file a report." That's the first duty of a police officer. Someone was on the phone for an hour and 10 minutes reporting that I was committing crimes. If you listen close, Sergeant Weeks says there was no crimes committed. But there was a potential crime. Uh-oh. He told on himself. He told on himself. A potential crime. Wow. Well, Ventura County had been my home for 68 years, and I love Ventura County, but I'm going to have to stand up to the hate. Hate crimes was legislated not till 1981. I grew up surrounded by hate. I rejected hate at a very young age. The doctors tell us that MRIs reveal that the human brain displays hate and love in the same place of the brain, according to MRIs. But there is one big difference. Love diminishes itself because it can be fulfilled. Hate doesn't diminish itself in the brain. Therefore, those who hate, love to hate. That's the secret. Those who hate, love to hate. Hate has its roots in those who want the lie to be the truth, in those who want the fake to be real. That's the roots of hate. I have always loved the truth. I have always loved the real. That's why it was so easy for me to reject hate. So you have seen now. "I'm not going to file a report," says Sergeant Weeks. That's the number-one duty of why he's being paid. Why he's being paid. So what motivated, what motivated Sergeant Weeks? I say the evidence is crystal clear. Hate motivated him. Hate. Pure hate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Your time is up. Our next regular speaker, Mr. Lucas there.
Anytime you want a free videographer lesson, Mr. Williams, please ask me. I'd like to help you with that. Okay, number 40. I don't like 40. Do away with 40. I think I'm a little too late. You already consented to it. But undo just what you did here on 40. 40 authorizes the Ventura County Sheriff's Department to work with the Drug Enforcement Administration on domestic cannabis eradication and suppression. In the state of California, in 1996, we passed a law that says that cannabis patients can use their medicine legally without fear of arrest. And I think that we should uphold that state law that we passed in 1996 and have our county sheriff's department refuse to cooperate with the Drug Enforcement Administration for any cannabis eradication or suppression, and instead pass a law that says that cannabis is allowed for recreational purposes, because I think that's really just psychological self-medicating. So really, it's medicational purposes, even if they don't know it. And I think that we should also pass another law that says that the Drug Enforcement Administration is not allowed to operate its activities in Ventura County. They can visit our beaches. They can sunbathe on the sand. They can hike in the hills if they want, but they cannot kill the cannabis plants that live in Ventura County. All right, that's enough of number 40. I think you got the point. This weekend was the one-year anniversary of the murder of Robert Ramirez, and about 75 voters marched through the streets of Oxnard chanting, "How do you spell racist? OPD." So that's 75 people you got to accuse of slander, Supervisor Parks. And they chanted, "Kill the cops off our streets." All seven of the officers that beat Robert Ramirez to death are still working in the city of Oxnard and could potentially kill again. And that makes me feel unsafe. I go to Oxnard and visit my mom every single day, and sometimes I even take the bus, so I'm walking on the sidewalk. And so I might get killed by Oxnard cops just for going to visit my mom and bring her soup. That's not fair. The Oxnard cops need to be held accountable for what they did to Robert Ramirez and to Alfonso Limone. I just called up Hannah Beth Jackson and talked to her about the offshore drilling in the Santa Barbara Channel. She's opposed to that, and I'd like the county board to encourage Hannah Beth Jackson and the rest of the state senate and the state assembly to legalize offshore drilling in all waters off the coast of California. And oh, by the way, pass a fracking ban, because I don't feel safe watering my garden, because the water goes through pipes that might be near fracking wells. And you need a public transportation system that's adequate and affordable and gets people from Ventura County to Los Angeles County regularly and that operates all night, because there are bars here in Ventura County that operate till 2:00 a.m., but your buses operate till 8:30 p.m. And that's a terrible recipe for drunk drivers between 9:00 p.m. and 2:00 a.m. So get like other normal cities and have late-running buses. It just makes sense. And there need to be more community gardens, and I need to have my little timer up here that says how much time I have left. And I'd like to point out that we're not allowed to have drinks in here, but you guys have drinks in here. So I'd like you to abolish the policy of no drinks in this room and also give free coffee like they have at this Ojai City Council meetings. It's a really nice thing. It doesn't cost very much, and it makes us feel good. Oh, another thing, food drop-off centers. I'd like to see at this building a free-food drop-off center where I could bring free food and drop it off, and then someone else that needs free food can come and pick it up. So like, I have lots of fresh produce all the time, vegetables and fruits and stuff, and so I just want to give it to people, and people need food all the time. And so it'd be really easy to make a nice little room with someone sitting there that checks in, "Okay, are you a Ventura County resident?" Or, you know, not even. We don't have to discriminate. Anyone can come here and get free food at this facility. So that'd be a great thing. I'd like to see more homeless shelters funded by county money, and I'd like to see the county sheriff's department and police departments treat homeless people like people, because they are people. I need to see the bathrooms be open 24 hours a day, because people need to use the bathroom late at night, and they're going to use it somewhere. They may as well use a clean facility. There needs to be a shower access for these people so that they can cleanse themselves regularly if they feel that that's appropriate, and then they can have a better luck getting a job later in their life. So please help the homeless people that live in Ventura County. There are about 2,000 of them, according to the Ventura County Star. There are about 2,000 of them, according to the Ventura County Star. And they are underserved. Please help. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. We're now ready for board comments, and Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I, very little as far as the county's concerned, but I met the Mexican consulate Bernice Diaz-Sabios. She's here, you know, as a new representative of Mexico. She replaced Mr. Rogelio, you know, so she's our new consulate. And just lately, this week, we're going to visit Casa Pacifica. My staff and I were going over to tour Casa Pacifica and kind of see how we can help over in Casa Pacifica. So, we're going to be doing that. And again, most of the time, I was spent with my grandkids, you know. One graduated, the other's here from Texas. So, I spent some time with them, and they'll be heading back to Texas this Saturday. So, that's all I have. And I have, I'd like to adjourn in memory of those folks on this list.
The joy of grandkids. You can have them and then send them home when...
Send them home. That's right.
Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you, and good morning. I'd like to first submit the list to adjourn in memory, calling out one, Stanley Eugene Mason, former Ventura County Fire Chief. I'm sure many of us knew Stan. And I'll submit that for the record. Um, let me see. Had the opportunity to attend the 2013 Champions in Healthcare Summit luncheon and had a great turnout of our HCA folks for our two docs who were honored. And just, and I know, I've talked about it in prior meetings, that it was coming up, but just to say that it was really a good celebration of many good people in this county and the success we have in this county in both philanthropy and healthcare. And it was very nice. And it was good that Mike was there and others. The keynote speaker was Herb K. Schultz, who's the Regional Director of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. And this is a man whose passion is amazing for healthcare and the Affordable Care Act and how it's going to lift all boats. And he, I know that the CEO spoke to him, but I did too, and personally invited him to come to our county. He said, "Oh, I know your county, particularly your behavioral health folks." But he said he'd love to do that. And it was really, really genuine.
Genuine.
Genuine, yeah. And very, very nice to celebrate and have that connection. Never know when those may help. I wanted to report out on a, and I know we have these, most of us do in our communities at some point, a community cleanup event. And we have one every year in Piru. And the Piru community does a Piru Community Beautification Electronic Waste Collection Event. And this was held just two weeks ago, actually, June 15th. And the collection, total tonnage collected was 18.3 tons with 10 roll-offs. And so, it was bulky items, green waste, metal, electronic waste. Not as heavy a participation as they've had in prior years, but we think that we took such a big haul last time that maybe everybody got rid of all that stuff. So, but it was still, it's always a good turnout and participation in the community. I'd like to thank Bruce Belushi, who's a division manager, IWMD. And Derek Wilson, he works at the CBEs too. He's a staff services manager. And Penny Leachman and Robert Barnas are contact or probation. They bring out reserve crews and sign probation officers to oversee the work of the release crews, who help with all of the heavy lifting and work. And of course, David Goldstein and Sandy Lamelli and a good group of IWMD staff. It's really appreciated in Piru, as you know. Certainly, a community that often feels that they're so isolated. But it's always good when our county pulls together and does good things for them and with them. So, I wanted to send appreciation to all the staff on that. I know we all received the information from our assessor. Is he planning to come in this morning to talk? No?
No.
Well, it's obviously out there in the universe, the successful role and the good news and the increase we've had in the assessment role. And in line with that, there was a report out of Sacramento that came through our group Platinum Advisors on the LAO's projections, actually, that in fact, the state budget has come in stronger than expected too, with income tax receipts increased 23%. And across the board, generally, a healthy climate for the state too. So, that gives us room to look at those formulas again and say, "Maybe, Governor, you really don't need to do all that." So, we'll continue the advocacy up there. And I also had the opportunity to attend, I'm front page on this. And I'll just report it out, because I enjoyed as much of it that I was able to attend. It was in the Central Coast Resilient Community Symposium in Santa Barbara on the UC campus. And Sue Hughes of our CEO's office was on a panel. And it was interesting to hear from the other cities, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo County, San Luis Obispo City, and others, and what they're doing in the role of energy and water and looking ahead at what our challenges are going to be. Overall, again, I was there for probably two or three hours, and Supervisor was there too. It was interesting to hear what others are doing, to look at, to see what we can, you know, capture from them and not to reinvent the wheel and the successes they're having. So, it was a good conference. And that is a wrap.
Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. You had 17 tons of waste collected at your...
18.3.
18.3. Well, I'll see your 18.3. We collected 23 tons in Moor Park Home Acres, Santa Rosa Valley.
Oh, right.
I think it's a good competition. Also, I was able to attend with Supervisor Bennett, too, the Hope for Kids. They had a 5K run walk, a first of its kind, over at CLU. And it was to raise funds for foster children. So, it was nice to see a really good turnout there, and I was pleased to be able to attend. And then, also, went that same day to a junior ranger graduation over at King Gillette Ranch that the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy takes part in. And these kids from Compton, the Compton Posse, came in and became sworn junior rangers. It's just such a great program to work with inner-city youth and helping them learn about nature. Some have never camped out in their lives and then also get that respect for nature and also see potential careers in natural resources. So, it was nice to be able to attend that. And then, also, this month is also the Cano Valley Little League's celebration of their 50th anniversary. So, that was kind of neat to see. And then, we're also seeing the retirement of Ed Haydock with the Simi Valley Ranch, Ranch of Simi Park and Rec District. And he's just been a great assistant for our office and for Oak Park, which is in that district. And then, just a note that I was, had the pleasure of being on jury duty yesterday. And boy, I have some suggestions for how to use people's times more efficiently over there. Hundreds of people, you know, waiting around, doing nothing particular, and seeing if we can't make that system a little bit more efficient, if we could. And then, also, I wanted to go ahead, oh, the final mention. It was nice to see the state of California reverse course on the Public Records Act. To me, it's such an essential part of the transparency of government that citizens and the press can be able to get those documents, public documents. And the idea that the state was going to make that optional, I think, would have been a real threat to the ability of open government and transparency. So, I was glad to see the governor back off and the state legislature back off on making it optional. And I know they want to make it into a constitutional amendment, so that they want to see that they don't have to be stuck for the costs. And that was their intent. But, boy, you talk about the ramifications of trying to cut costs in a situation like that. And then, finally, I'd like to close in honor of the people on this list and call out a few. Very sadly, to see two young men who died at 23 years old. Michael Christopher Gulick, whose parents have established a scholarship fund at UC Davis Animal Service, Animal Science Veterinary School, because they are just, you know, that's where their son graduated and was wanting to become a veterinarian. So, it's really sad to see him die. And then, also, a friend of my son's, Alex Esrich, also died. He was the, survived by parents Leslie Orth and Zachary Esrich, and stepparents Rob Orth and Katie Esrich. And he died of lymphoma. And it's just so difficult for the families, obviously, and the friends, to see these young folks go. And it was very sad. I was able to attend the funeral and just realize how important every day is. Also, I want to close in honor of a lady named Phyllis Armstrong. And Phyllis was one of the backbones of the Shelter Hope Pet Shop, where they were helping to get our animal services, animals adopted, a great program, bringing it to the shopping malls. And she volunteered and helped run that. So, I know she'll be very much missed. And then, just finally, also, if you've ever locked yourself out of your house or needed to get a locksmith, I think everybody in Thousand Oaks at some point met Jerry Oberly, who was the owner of Jerry's Lock and Key. And I know he too will be missed. So, that concludes my comments, and just ask that we close in honor of those folks.
Supervisor Parks, I hope you'll pass on to your son, our sorrow that he lost a good friend there. I would like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. And as Supervisor Long mentioned, I was able to attend the Central Coast Resilient Community Symposium. And we do have to pay attention to the increased vulnerability that we're all going to have as climate change brings more and more climate changes to us that we'll have to adjust to. And I also attended the Hope for Kids event that Supervisor Parks has already mentioned. I just want to mention that we're beginning the process of modifying our outreach for parents. I was really impressed with what we did for the first time, that there were pictures there of children and some children there for people to talk to, and the connection was great. And a young woman came out of the blue. She is, works at Pepperdine, 24-years-old, former foster child herself, and a powerful speaker. And so, she's going to come to the boardroom this fall, and we're going to just kind of repeat the event here in the boardroom this fall. If there isn't somebody that, after hearing all that, doesn't become a foster parent of one of those kids, I will be really surprised. But it was really motivational. The other thing, just for anybody listening to this, this is two people at a church in Simi Valley. It's Church of Living Christ, I believe, in Newberry Park. I'm sorry, not Simi Valley. And these two people in the church just said, you know, "Hey, we need to do more to try to promote the more foster, more people step forward, become foster parents." And they went to their church. The church said, "Okay." And their very first event, they had 400 people participate in a 5K run. They had about 20 booths there. They just had a remarkable event, and just two volunteers on their own decided to do something. They had an impact in Ventura County last Saturday that was really remarkable. So, to our county Human Services Agency and the other organizations that helped out there, I just want to say thank you. And then, I was able to also attend the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy celebration of acquiring, for those of you that are familiar with Ojai, but some very unique hills. The mountains there in the Ojai are the only mountains that run that direction. And they framed that valley, and people have, for a long time, wanted to try to make sure those hills stay pristine. And they just acquired in record time the funds they needed to purchase one of the really big, beautiful tracks that now creates a trail. And I see Leroy smiling, but people in Ojai can now hike and get up above the city, look down on it. It's really connecting the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy with the people there. They raised money so fast that they went to the Ojai City Council and withdrew their requests for money from the Ojai City Council to help fund. But that's an organization, it's certainly the most successful land conservancy in Ventura County. They just are setting the place on fire in terms of their acquisition. So, I want to congratulate them for that also. Right, and pardon the pun, Fire Department. Yeah, right, pardon the pun there.
Don't do that.
Okay. And with that, we've finished our board comments. And our next agenda item is item 62, Human Services Agency Workforce Investment Board Recommendation.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Talia Barrera with the Workforce Investment Board of Ventura County. Item 62 before you is the recommendation to appoint Commander Scott Lushke, representing Naval Base Ventura County for a new two-year term. And I only have one today. So, I would like to answer any questions.
Great. And great to have the naval base represented on the Workforce Investment Board. We need a motion?
It's moved.
It's been moved and seconded, and we'll vote. And thank you very much for coming down to make that presentation. Item 63, Recommendation Supervisor Parks. That's your senior summit.
Thank you. This item is to ask the board to allow us to receive donations towards the senior summit that we're going to be having November 2nd, 2013, and also, if any of your staff want to help support it. And I hope that you too will be able to attend. This is something we've been able to put together every couple of years, and it allows for seniors throughout the county to come together and learn about issues of importance to their quality of life. This year, we're going to be focusing on health in partnership with a healthcare agency who's kind of taking a more lead role on these summits, which I so appreciate, and looking at getting seniors their 100,000-mile checkup and breaking it into different segments based on healthcare issues that affect seniors. And it's a wonderful day, half-of-a-day conference where seniors from the senior centers can get free transportation to Cal State University Channel Islands by the donations from different bus companies. And then, have actually a nice continental breakfast and senior nutrition lunch, also because of donations that we will receive. And I'm just, I'm delighted to have such excellent workshops available. It's not like a senior expo where it's just a bunch of tables. These are actual classroom activities where you go and get some very detailed information and be able to have a good give-and-take with the speakers, who are, in this case, the healthcare professionals. I know we established something last time called Ask the Doctor, and I've seen that now duplicated in other conferences going on throughout our county. So, it's nice to see that we are able to put this forward and not have to have taxpayers front it. And I'm just delighted to see that we can move forward. And I know it'll be a lot of work, and that's why I would ask for your support in more ways than one. And I'll make the motion.
I'd be happy to second that. And I just want to compliment you, Supervisor Parks. It's been great leadership on this. And there's something special that happens at this summit every time. It's just a very different event than most other events that are out there. It is informative. It's not just sort of a lip service event. And there's a, I think, there's such a sense of appreciation by the seniors who are there. They get the free transportation, and they get a lot... and they get a lot of great information and stuff. So congratulations for pulling it off again and stuff.
It is a delight to see them get off the buses with their notebooks and like they're going to school and also big thanks to Cal State Channel Islands for, uh, giving us the venue.
Well, congratulations. We're ready to vote on this item?
We ought to get Mr. Schultz to come and speak. He's so passionate. He's so passionate.
This guy would, could be your man. All right. All righty. All righty. Um, we are, um, item, uh, 64, approval of the year-end budget and other adjustments. Mr. Dursey.
Morning Board Members. Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. We are here with our annual, uh, year-end budget adjustment board letter. This is, uh, cleans up the current fiscal year, uh, 2012, 2013 budget. Uh, we have 13 recommendations. Most of the, the majority of the recommendations are standard accounting and budgetary cleanup type transactions. But I, there are a few of them that I'd like to bring to your attention, starting with the recommendation number seven, which is the, uh, recommendation to allocate some one-time tobacco settlement funds to the, to, uh, basically the county, uh, medical center for assistance in their upgrade of their, uh, electronic health record system. And then in addition to that, some of it will be set aside in accordance with the tobacco settlement ordinance to the, the healthcare restricted fund balance for healthcare and allocated to non-governmental agencies, uh, going forward. So that, those, that particular, uh, one-time dollars are, are going to be allocated over the, over the years to the, uh, non, non, non-governmental entities and then a one-time contribution to the medical center to help, uh, clear the electronic health records is integrated throughout the entire, uh, medical system. Primarily tobacco settlement funds are used to supplement and supple- uh, supplement, uh, the, uh, the clinic hours and, and emergency hours and they're helping. So, uh, this, uh, integration with the electronic health records with the clinics is, is really a, a really good tie-in to, for our, for our one-time contribution. Uh, recommendation number eight is our, is our recommendation to basically pay off the, the debt for the Excela system. Initially, we borrowed about 4.2 mil- about $4.2 million to, to fund this. We, we were going to pay it off over a number of years through additional fees and part, part of it was going to be general fund, uh, cost, part of it was going to be additional fees to the, to the users of the, of the permit system. But, uh, we think that in, in light of some additional revenues that we did receive, uh, on the redevelopment agency, some one-time revenue, we thought that it would be a good opportunity to pay off some one-time debt. So our, our recommendation is to pay off this debt. Uh, it'll pay off the, uh, a commercial paper debt of about 3.3 million dollars and it, it really does give a little bit additional flexibility, financial flexibility to departments. We think that it will at least stabilize rates, if not reduce some rates, and, and depending on the department. For example, it had a significant impact in the Fire Department. This Excela rate, uh, had a significant impact in the Fire Department, not as significant in our, in the Resource Management Agency because it's spread over a, a lot bigger base, but, uh, we, we think it'll stabilize those rates, uh, going into the future and, and help with, with the departments, give them some additional flexibility. Pay off, again, pay off long-term debt, uh, and reduce our outstanding debt level and it's good use for, we think a good use for one-time, one-time revenues to pay off some debt, uh, one-time debt. Um, and then finally, the, uh, the one I'd like to discuss a little bit more is, is the, our annual contrib- what we call the annual contribution. We would like to recommend to your board a number of, uh, contributions, again, using some one-time funds, one-time contributions to help out some, uh, basically non-general fund departments, the Parks Department, the Harbor Department and Library for some specific, uh, required maintenance issues to help them catch up on some of their backlog in the required maintenance areas. As Supervisor Bennett was, was asking those questions the other day at the final budget hearings, uh, we had recognized, our offices recognized that some of these departments are a little further behind than the general fund as far as making some of the catch-up in, in, in the, um, required maintenance. So our, our recommendation is to contribute $200,000 to each of the Parks and the Harbor Department and then an additional, uh, $25,000 to the, the Library and then also $25,000 to the Parks Department as match funds to hopefully that'll entice the state to, uh, take care of the La Janelle property. So we set aside, give, give Harbor a $25,000, um, contribution and then they can use that and try to see what they can generate from the state to, to clean up that property over there. Those are our primary recommendations and then number, the, the final recommendation is, is basically year-end loan balances that we're recommending, uh, to take care of some, some outstanding cash flow issues. And I'd be more than happy to answer any specific questions and we do have some department representations. Generally, I can answer most of the questions. Hopefully.
Good, good presentation. Do we have questions? Supervisor Parks?
Um, thank you. I, it, I appreciate the presentation and, uh, we will still have some, uh, available funds, uh, that aren't being used in the tobacco settlement.
Yes.
Fees. And I think we have been able to do some really good things with those funds too. I know, uh, they were used to assist a program at, uh, Cano Valley Adult Ed and so I appreciate that we are going to keep some of those, um, as we see fit. The, uh, the suggestion of matching funds for La Janelle, I think that's a great idea because, uh, the state may be able to provide the, the rest of that. But I just think it's a good idea in general to have matching funds for the parks. I just think about, um, next weekend, the Santa Rosa Valley community has bought and paid for and are installing a round pen for the park, uh, I think about a $10,000 effort. But just the idea that even private citizens may want to contribute to our parks if we offer matching, um, grants. So that might be something to think about for GSA in the future. Also, this is probably something you can't answer. Ha ha. We'll see, we'll see. But, um, one of the items on here is to increase slightly, uh, the amount of money going to non-emergency medical transportation services and it's with the Area Agency on Aging. And I note that also item 27 with the Public Health Department puts aside, um, $215,000 for the same type, at least it's also described as, um, non-medical transportation for people on Medi-Cal. And so, uh, what I would ask is that I, I get some more information about what, what is this transportation that we're talking about? Where is it being done? And if they are both the same program or if they're two separate programs, um, I think that'd be good information to have. So I'll ask for that.
We'll get that information for you. Supervisor Zergos?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, Paul. You know, one of the things that, uh, I want to thank you, uh, for the $25,000 for La Janelle, we're going to need probably about a hundred thousand to, to, uh, open up that road that goes up to La Janelle. And, um, hopefully we're going to go see our, our folks over in Sacramento, see if we can get some more money for La Janelle to, to open that road up. There's about 25, excuse me, about 50 to 60 parking spaces up in La Janelle that we can use. Over in, um, in that area, you know, the parking is really needed desperately because, uh, that area needs parking because of the fishing, because it's a very popular surfing area and so forth. So I think it's a, it's a good start and hopefully we get some matching funds for that so we can open, uh, that parking lot up in La Janelle. So I think it's a good investment for the community.
I think it helps, uh, continue your leadership in terms of trying to open up park, uh, issues.
Absolutely.
So Supervisor Zergos, congratulations on that. Supervisor Wong?
Um, yes, thank you. And, and thank you, um, Mr. Dursey for all your work on this and the CEO and, and your team. Um, I think these are all good recommendations. The one on the tobacco settlement funds, um, is, is solid and something that will, uh, continue to honor what boards did before us in saying these tobacco funds go for healthcare. They go to really to, uh, support and improve and advance, um, services that are healthcare-focused, um, in response to the dollars collected from what were, um, um, health impacts from smokers over decades. So, um, so one, I think it's good, uh, and the electronic health records is so, so key to us being, um, ready for the Affordable Healthcare Act and moving forward on it. So it's, uh, very important to have that, um, uh, solid. And the other, related to the Parks and the Harbor, um, as this board knows, years ago, Parks and the Harbor were one, uh, and then they were separated and then they were both set up as enterprise funds and, and they both, um, have moved, uh, moved through the years, um, conservatively and, and I think as efficiently as they can, but they, they, uh, we're, we're seeing, um, needs that I think with these, we can, we can help to give them a few extra dollars to jumpstart deferred maintenance needs and, and these are, are, as we advance the, um, Harbor, um, uh, vision, it, it, for the public and to engage. I was out there yesterday related to other issues, but, um, saw three different areas where kids were using the BISC and using the programming and out there sailing and see the Channel Islands masked on the, on the, what are the small boats called? What are the small boats, uh, small sailboats? Um, and, uh, and it happened to see Kitty Beach and, and there was a, a bit of that wall that fell down yesterday. Yeah.
And I could see some, I could see some of the dollars are going to be used for the, for the maintenance.
A bit of that wall. So they were right on at the, the lens, small but mighty staff. Um, so there, there is need there. So I, I think that these are all solid recommendations and, and certainly support them.
And you know, just to add a little bit to that, over at the beach, you know, the, the replacement of the Peninsula Park Restrooms and also the, the directional monument, I think it's important to, to get our people over to the BISC, to get our people over to the museum and, and all those, uh, uh, great places for our, the public to visit. So I think it's important. Thank you.
Just to supplement that, uh, I, I think both Parks and Harbor do a great job also of drawing down state and federal funds. So they really lever to maximize their revenues and, and they'll put these dollars to good use on maintenance, definitely. Uh, and on the healthcare piece too, as, as your board has talked about with tobacco settlement funds in the past, those were really focused on additional hours, uh, at the clinics, urgent care hours, evening hours, that kind of thing. So this, this, having this electronic health record connecting all those clinics or urgent care in one place, one single record will really help them, so.
Well, I, I, there's just two points I'd like to make. Number one, I'd like to compliment the departments that we're funding. I think it's just a, uh, it's just a vote of confidence that, I think everybody's doing a great job here in the county, but those departments in particular, I think, have, have earned a reputation of, of, um, using the dollars well and, and they have significant needs and we really appreciate their, their efforts. But the other point I'd like to make is, this is just a continuation. I mean, this is, this is a very prudent way to handle our budget, um, in terms of, of moving forward. And I think it's just another example of, of good, sound budgeting practices, um, as we go forward to have our reserves growing still, uh, and at the same time be making some modest and prudent, uh, investments where they need to be made and giving ourselves some flexibility also as we go into a year with a significant amount of uncertainty out there. Um, that's, that's just a great combination. So, um, it, it is, you, you, you listed the comments of the three rating agencies last time and it's been a long time coming. I remember when we, the first couple of years when we improved our budget and we went back and we said, well, why aren't you improving our credit rating? And they said, you know, uh, um, two years is, does not make a trend, right? Uh, I think now, uh, 12 years, they're now starting to say, and it's not only a trend, it's a real culture in Ventura County and it's one that in the long run, people in Ventura County are really going to benefit from. So, um, to Mr. Dursey, Mr. Powers and, and the team, um, I'm very impressed with, uh, where we, where we're going here budget-wise. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're ready for, I'll make the motion actually on this one.
If I may, um, just as we see more, uh, supplementing the budget of the Parks Department and how, um, you know, maybe put a goal out there of trying to get free parking at the parks. No other, uh, park district in the county charges for parking at their parks. And I think that, uh, it's expensive just to have to collect the parking fees and all that kind of stuff. It's a good goal to have out there as, uh, we see our budgets getting better to bring more services to the community.
All righty. And, uh, that measure passes and we're now at item 66. We have 10 more minutes before 10 o'clock.
65.
65, thank you very much.
I'll just stay right here then?
There we go.
If you don't mind. This is our office's recommendation to, uh, receive a notification of 50 cent adjustment to the living wage, uh, effective July 1st, 2013. This is a, uh, automatic increase that our board, our office comes to your board with, unless our office, uh, determines there's undue burden on our budget, which we can't in good conscience say there is. So we are here to recommend to your board that, uh, the, uh, the, uh, living wage be increased from $10 to $10.50 for those without benefits, or with benefits, excuse me, and from 12 to 12.50 for the ones that are.
What is it? $10 without benefit? I mean, $10 with benefits?
With benefits, right. And then $12.
And now they're both going to 10.50 and 12.50.
12.50, okay.
Yeah. All righty. We have a motion.
Second.
We have it seconded. And, um, that passes.
Thank you.
4-0. And now we're at item 66, Public Works, and, uh, we're going to get through both Public Works items so that everybody can be out of here before 10, right? Hopefully.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Bennett, Mr. Powers, supervisors for the record, I'm Dave Fleisch with the Public Works Agency Transportation Department. The item before you presents the County Ventura Transportation Development Act Program for FY 1314. Uh, this year, the allocation for the unincorporated county is 3.295 million, which is up about 167,000 from last year. That's primarily due to an increase in sales tax revenues, which is where the Transportation Development Act funding comes from. Of that program, of the, of the 3.925 available, 2.348 will be spent on existing or new transit programs and I'll address the remainder in a, in a couple of minutes. Uh, but just a couple of highlights of the program. For Gold Coast Transit, uh, we will continue to fund the Ojai portion, portion of the fixed route, uh, service through, uh, Ojai to, uh, to the unincorporated area on the other side and that, that to the county is about 142,000 dollars. Uh, as your board is aware, Gold Coast is in the process of moving forward with the formation of their transit district and Assembly Bill 664 is forward right now and we expect that that will occur in 2000, uh, in the 1314 year. Um, you'll note the difference in the Vista, the Vista, the Ventura Inner City Service Transit Authority service this year, we're not paying for the 101 or the 126 service, uh, VCTC because of stability of the state transit assistance funds is able to pay for that out of that funding. So that's about a hundred thousand dollars that we previously have been paying as a local match that we're not going to be paying this year. So the only Vista service that you see in there is the, uh, diaride service in the Heritage Valley. Um, you'll note in Agoura, uh, the Oak Park Diaride, we funded, uh, $350,000 of a demonstration for a, a fixed route shuttle service on Canaan Road that will be starting on, on August 5th. Um, we expect it'll run about 12 hours a day during two, two-hour peak periods in the morning and the afternoon. It'll be a 15-minute headways and 30-minute headways the rest of the time. Uh, we expect that will likely reduce the diaride costs because part of the purpose of that is to get some of that diaride service onto a fixed route service, but we don't really have a way to evaluate that cost reduction, so we haven't included that cost reduction in the diaride service. For the available balance of about 950,000, it's still available this year, one more year for street and road purposes. Typically in the past, we've used that, um, to provide our local match for, um, bicycle and pedestrian projects for things that are associated to transit as we can. Specifically this year, I've asked to set aside 150,000 of that to, uh, to do improvements to the bus stops that we have with, within the unincorporated area to make sure that we have sufficient, uh, benches and shelters and trash receptacles because some of those areas, we had those previously provided by a contractor and they went away. So we're working through all of those areas to make sure that we can improve our bus shelters or our bus stops to be as, as, uh, best as they can be for the ridership that's there. Additionally, we expect $50,000, uh, will be required to go toward the Heritage Valley Transit as we move forward with a, uh, joint powers authority and request for proposal and marketing as we move to the new service there when that's completed, uh, through VCTC at the end of this coming fiscal year. We expect it will cost us some money to, uh, to get that stood up. Uh, finally, uh, your board approved, uh, the East County Memorandum of Agreement, um, or Concept on June 4th and we expect to bring that back to your board in September, the official, uh, Memorandum of Agreement on East County Service. At this point, we're not aware of any additional services in the East County that will require funding in this coming fiscal year. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Supervisor Zergos?
Quick, uh, on Heritage Square, uh, Square, excuse me, Valley Transit, uh, who's going to be the JP, is that going to be a JPA? Who's going to run it or?
Um, we don't know at this point.
Well, I have a meeting on that coming up here shortly, meeting with all the, um, the two cities and ourselves, so.
Okay, because they didn't want to join, uh, Gold Coast, you know, so they, now you're looking at you.
We're, yes, we're, we're going to sit down and have a, um, a heart-to-heart discussion and see where we end up with it.
As I might say, if somebody go into Gold Coast, anyway, okay.
I would just, uh, like to thank very much, uh, Mr. Fleisch and his work with, uh, Agoura Hills, uh, to be able to put together a, uh, a fixed route, something that I've been trying to get in the Oak Park area. Oak Park is about the size of two of our, uh, different. Oak Park is about the size of two of our different smaller cities, Fillmore and Port Huonimi. I mean, it's, it's right up there in population and yet they don't have any kind of fixed route there. And I think that particularly this one, we're calling it the Canaan Shuttle, just going up and down Canaan and particularly during those school start and stop times, that 15 minute headways, that's pretty unprecedented in the county. And that will enable us hopefully to reduce the traffic around our schools there. I know everyone, you know, has tremendous traffic around their schools, everyone drives to school and drives their kids to school. So this will give us an opportunity to reduce that kind of traffic, but it also, because you have Canaan as the major arterial there, connects the shopping centers there and the residents to shopping and schools and the library and the community center all along Canaan. So I'm really hoping that we'll be able to get the word out and people will use it and we have some nice design for the bus. Instead of, you know, the Greyhound bus, we've got the Mountain Lion bus, so we've got the Leaping Mountain Lion, so, because that area is surrounded by hills and the community is very much in touch with the open space there and hopefully we'll get these kids taking the bus. It also has a lot of students who are from out of the area and we'll be able hopefully to link up with them so the parents don't have to drive all the way into the community, but actually get them near the freeway onramps and exit and they can drop off the kids there instead and reduce the traffic on Canaan, so. All good potential there and I hope it all works out and just thank you so much for moving forward.
You know, a thought I had as I looked at this thing, the Canaan Road thing, is, you know, just after spending some time in some countries that have really good mass transit, is I think it's just good for those young people to realize that you don't have to go in a private vehicle everywhere and that jumping on mass transit is a logical, normal thing to do in an area and stuff. Great. Appreciate the foresighted leadership of the Transportation Department in terms of the Ojai situation and the funding and the trolley and all that, realizing it's actually a cost saver to move forward that way, so thank you very much, Mr. Fleisch.
Mr. Chair, I just, I know he's here and Kathy, but I'd just like to commend him, you know, for their assistance with Gold Coast Transit and VCTC, you know, they always come up with good recommendations, you know, I just want to thank them for the good work.
All right.
Dave and Kathy.
We have, we have a motion by Supervisor Long and seconded by Supervisor Zergosa to approve this item and that item passes. We're at item 67.
Thank you so much.
Watership Protection District.
Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tolly Clifford, I'm with the Public Works Agency and I'm the Director of the Watership Protection District. I'm before you today requesting that you approve the plans and specifications and award a contract to Macro Zee Technology for the J Street Drain Project. This is for the section from Ormond Beach Lagoon to downstream of Huonimi Road. The project will remove and replace 2,600 linear feet of channel and 77 linear feet of box culvert to increase the capacity of the drain. This will result in a flood risk reduction to over 400 homes and businesses and the Oxnard wastewater treatment plant. The project is the first phase of a four-phase project and will eventually increase capacity from Redwood Street to the Pacific Ocean. There has been a great deal of public outreach associated with the project and this has resulted in changes to the scope of work to lessen the impact of the project on adjacent properties. Unfortunately, this also increased project costs and led to difficulties with the initial low bidder. As outlined in the board letter, we are asking that Proven Management be relieved as the apparent low bidder due to a clerical error associated with the press-in sheet pile calculations that they submitted. This is a very specialized, low-impact operation and Proven failed to calculate the cost correctly. We actually also had some difficulty with this item when we estimated and we estimated it about $10 per square foot, too low. We didn't realize the degree of difficulty in the location of this project and that discrepancy was approximately $1.9 million in total. So we are asking, as I mentioned, that Proven be relieved and that the project be awarded to Macro Zee Technology for approximately $16.5 million. With your approval, the project is ready to go. It is a high-profile project in a difficult working environment and I'm confident that the project can be completed successfully. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Oh, Supervisor Long.
Yes, it is, thank you. And thank you for getting this to us. Has been a long time coming, but I'll say also very excellent work by all of Public Works staff and team and working with the community and listening to what their concerns are and making adjustments and I think we have now what is a project and this action, of course, as has been described, will resolve any of the last little strings hanging out there and be able to move ahead on this and get it underway and I think we have a solid project there, so I appreciate the work by everyone in Watership. Thank you.
Supervisor.
I also want to thank Tolly and Jeff, you know, for excellent work, you know, this is going to be from Huonimi Road to the ocean, right, and then from Redwood to Huonimi is going to be the other phase.
That's correct.
So, no, I think, you know, it's good, you know, because we've had problems there in the past and, you know, resolve quite a few problems, especially, hopefully maybe the water doesn't back up when we have rain and hopefully those folks don't have to buy FEMA insurance later on, which is going to help the constituency too. So that's a good project.
We have a motion by Supervisor Long and seconded by Supervisor Zergosa. Ready to vote? And we're at item 60.
Get her done.
We're at items, that motion passes, we're at item 68, a correspondence agenda.
Mr. Chair, I certainly would move correspondence, but I wanted to just, on item 69, on the vacancy on the United Water Conservation District, I inquired on this. The citizen who serves on there right now is stepping down for personal reasons and so the district is looking to move ahead with this in the least expensive way they can. There's 18 months remaining on this particular seat, so it will certainly be up for election and would allow for election to take place, but, so they have, as the letter is put forward, going through a process of inviting interested parties who wish to be appointed to come forward and do so.
And consistent with our policy, I'd like to ask our staff and everybody else who can to try to get as much publicity as possible, including the press, about this opening that is out there so that the public is aware of this, of an opening like this.
Right. And we'll do the same on our website.
Yeah. Certainly if it's, you know, like a year and a half for an election so that everybody knows about it at this point in time, you don't create a sense of it's just being passed on.
With those comments, I'd move the correspondence agenda.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, correspondence agenda. And, all right, we have time, I think we could get a short start on our closed session and we'll be back out at 10 o'clock. Thank you very much. Okay, Brian, I'd like to call this meeting back to order and we have three 10 o'clock time certain items. And the first one of those is a recommendation of myself and Supervisor Long to direct County Executive Office to allocate $300,000 in the fiscal budget. Supervisor Long, anything that you want to mention on that before?
Well, I just, I think the letter speaks for itself as we worked with the stakeholders group in recalibrating the 10-year plan and the focus did really move to housing first and the great success we've had with our housing.
Make sure that's in the minutes.
You're supposed to laugh.
So Brian, how good is your technology at editing?
Can you cut that? Success. They hadn't laughed, it had been all right, it had gone right all the way.
We didn't hear anything.
You're amongst friends.
With the increased emphasis on rapid rehousing and housing first and, again, the programs that we've been able to get up and help folks to succeed here, I think this is just another opportunity to invest in what I think is really a very good project and one that will benefit the goals that we have in the 10-year plan, so.
Great, thank you. I agree, I think the letter speaks for itself and we have two public speakers on this and I'll go ahead and take the public speaker first, if that's right with the board members. Denise Weiss of the Housing Authority.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, esteemed supervisors, Mr. Powers. My name is Denise Weiss and I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the Housing Authority of the City of San Buenaventura. And I want to thank you for your consideration currently, that sits before you today and that's the $300,000 allocation to the project known as Castillo del Sol. The project is a 40-unit project, it is meant to serve senior and/or disabled. It does serve the homeless need, as a matter of fact, we have worked with Carol Shulkin and her team to reserve, to commit three units to chronically homeless within that development. It has also supported services-rich. One of the things that, in times of today when we have shrinking resources, our agency in particular has been hit by sequestration, we feel it both physically and viscerally, it's always a good idea and we practice this in our agency to reevaluate our strategies. And one of the things about the particular strategy that the county has before you as far as the retooled strategy to end homelessness is it looks at it from a very comprehensive perspective. I have been involved in this two-year decade program of ending homelessness and with that said, one of the pieces and the common link is permanent housing. And we are here today to request your approval on a number of fronts. We are, our request for funds is in keeping with the retooled vision of the 10-year strategy. We are not taking away from our shelter partners, but we are adding to the dynamic balance between permanent housing and homelessness. And by bringing in permanent housing with supportive services, it is a way, it is another linkage that must be attained to end homelessness. We are also, this request becomes critical as because to our tax credit application, which is due July the 3rd. The project is a total of $10 million. This $300,000 will allow us to attract and leverage $7 million in equity. This Housing Authority also has skin in the game, so I'm not just coming to you with open hand, but the Housing Authority has skin in the game as we are committing project-based vouchers. So what does that mean? By committing project-based vouchers, that means the long-term affordability, we are talking about very low income, so that's 30% or below of area median income. And we're also looking at, by committing the project-based vouchers, what that also assures is that there's operating funds to continue their project to move forward. So it's not only about brick and mortar, that's the start, but it's also about ensuring that the project continues on a successful path. So with that said, I want to thank you for this opportunity. It's a pleasure to be before this board, I've not spoken before you before, and I really do strongly urge that you support this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kathy Bernicki.
I'm sure you are as surprised as I am to find myself here speaking against an affordable housing allocation. I do believe that the solution to homelessness is housing and I have nothing but the highest respect for the Housing Authority of the City of Ventura. However, I am opposed to your taking this funding and moving it to a different purpose. $750,000 of the $2 million that you committed in April 2010 have already been removed from this bucket of money. That money was for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing purposes and we were all fully supportive of that. However, there are three ongoing efforts now within the County of Ventura to find and to create emergency shelter programs. Two of those are in West County, which is where the highest homeless population are to be found. I would also remind you that emergency shelter is in the 10-year strategy to end homelessness just as permanent housing is. In fact, in the 2007 version, 150 shelter beds were called for, but only 12 were created. So we are way behind the ball on getting emergency shelter beds in place. And while I am a firm supporter of housing first, we do need emergency shelter beds for those families who find themselves with nowhere to go tonight. The other thing I need to remind you is that there are fewer streams of funding to support emergency shelter. You know, in your own county, Emergency Solutions Grant, which is one of the funding sources we can use, Ventura County got no funds in this current funding round. So, and COC funds can't be used for it, so there are fewer funding streams for emergency shelter beds. And that is why I am asking you, please don't take this action. I would respectfully suggest that there are probably other funding sources that could be used to find this $300,000 for the Housing Authority, in particular, I think you should look at your home funds. That's really all I have to say unless you have any questions.
Thank you for testimony. And if there are no other public comments, I'll, in the public part of this, and open it up for our board discussion, I think as being one of the two people making the motion, I'd like to make a few comments in response. There was a reference to the $750,000 of the $2 million that we put for emergency shelters already being taken and I think that that, number one, when we did that, there was no opposition, no concern about using shelter money for the homeless prevention fund and it was taken for good reason. And I think one of the reasons is that we allocated that money three years ago for emergency shelters and we've had no one step forward with a credible emergency shelter program yet at this point in time. There's a reference to three efforts that are out there, one in Thousand Oaks, one in Oxnard and one in Ventura. There is no certainty that any of those efforts will actually come to us as credible, viable options for us to move forward. The Thousand Oaks one is, we're talking about a couple of years from now before the site would even potentially be available and the operating dollars has been the big problem. We're talking about the allocation of one-time dollars, it's the operating revenue for emergency shelters that has been the big sticking point and it's, it's an interesting thing to point out that there's less money available for emergency shelters, there's even less money available for the operations and maintenance of emergency shelters and so, again, there are challenges out there with emergency shelters. And now that the federal government has made such a strong commitment to housing first, there is even less money available for funding of emergency shelters that are out there. The City of Ventura, we, there's this, one suggestion that's. The City of Ventura, we, there's this, one suggestion that the City of Ventura has a proposal out there. The first I've heard of this recent proposal was now, but I would point out that, that the quietly, behind-the-scenes forces in the City of Ventura have killed every emergency shelter proposal that has been out, that has been made in the last years for a permanent emergency shelter. And I think we have to ask ourselves, we have an opportunity to do something right now that hits the priority identified need of the 10-year plan to end homelessness, which is for chronic homeless, to try to get them a permanent bed. It is a modest investment of $300,000 to try to leverage, as was pointed out, $7 million of matching funds that are out there. It still leaves $950,000 in the emergency shelter fund. So that is the priority of the 10-year plan. I, I can't in good faith say, on the possibility that something may be out there many years down the road, pass up on this proposal at this point in time. And I think this is the appropriate use. When we allocated those funds, it was a total of $3 million. It was for social detox, it was for the housing trust fund, emergency shelter, but the broad umbrella was, we said, we have a 10-year plan to end homelessness, and we put $3 million up to try to take the steps that the 10-year plan identified. The 10-year plan has changed, and it makes me consider whether we should, you know, change the, you know, if it is creating a sense of entitlement or expectation that we can't, you can't, or shouldn't do other things with that, maybe we should, should consider that designation. But it was $3 million for the 10-year plan. This is the number-one priority of the 10-year plan. Therefore, I think it's appropriate for us to move forward. Happy to hear other comments. Supervisor Parks?
Well, I want to first laud your leadership, both Supervisor Long and Bennett, on doing more for the homeless here in Ventura County than many have. And also, the project that is being considered, I understand from seeing a lot of affordable housing projects moving forward, the incredible difficulty in trying to get funding, and the multiple sources of funds that you need. And as you're saying, this is a modest amount in terms of the entire project, and also, what a great ability to leverage more funds this will present. So I do support the project, obviously, but I also know that the funds that were set aside, were set aside for emergency shelters. And in a way, it provides an incentive. And perhaps it's because that fund is there that we have got now three projects that we're looking forward to moving forward on. The one in Thousand Oaks, I think, while you hold some doubt there, I think it certainly can happen, you know, where there is a will, there is a way. And it is very challenging to do an emergency shelter. We have the benefit of having a fire station site in Newberry Park that will become available shortly, and I think that does offer some good opportunities. It's in a good location, it's on transit. So I think that we have a chance on working on this. And in my area, we've worked trying to find a location for probably 20 years. So I think that this is the farthest that we've gotten. We've got a location that we, I think, will be able to use. It is challenging, particularly now, because there is less funding available for emergency shelters. And because of that, that makes this fund even more important that we have. But I don't think that this is a zero-sum game. You know, you've stepped up in the past, our Board of Supervisors has stepped up in the past and put together this fund to begin with. We took it out of our reserves, we put it aside, and we said, this is our goal, to see that we have funds available for homeless prevention in the 10-year plan. But also, what Ms. Bernicki pointed out too, we need a place for people tonight, and that's what emergency shelter is all about. And while the federal government has an emphasis now on, you know, let's get permanent homes, and de-emphasizing and defunding really programs for emergency shelters, I think we need to continue to realize that we need funds for it. And if we have an opportunity to put emergency shelter in place, that we need to move forward on it. And it will require our board to step up and provide funding for it, because, as I said, I think this already has provided incentive for three projects to move forward and attempt to put in emergency shelter. But I think it isn't a zero-sum game. We have the funds we've, we've put forward before, and I think that we will have the funds to put forward again when, for example, the Thousand Oaks one moves forward. So I'm going to support the motion, and I am also doing it with the understanding that our board will be there for the community when we come forward with an emergency shelter funding proposal.
Supervisor Zaragosa?
You know, I think it's important, I believe that we're looking for permanent housing for seniors, veterans, and adults that cannot afford, you know, the regular rent. So I think it's an opportunity for them to get that permanent housing and also be able to, to afford it. And I think that the, we're looking at, what, 39-plus studio and apartments and so forth? And I think that permanent housing is extremely important to get those folks from the homeless area that they're at into permanent housing. So I think it's a, it's a good opportunity to put 39 families into permanent housing, and as, as was mentioned by the Housing Authority, leveraging of those dollars is extremely important to, $300,000 to pick up, what is it, 600, I mean, 6 million? Or 7 million? $7 million? I think it's extremely important that we take advantage of that leveraging of those dollars. But I think the key thing here is that we're going to help the seniors, veterans, and adults and the disabled to get permanent housing. So I think it's extremely important.
Well, I appreciate hearing the support of Supervisors Parks and Zaragosa to this, and made the motion Supervisor Long is seconding it here. I want to take this moment to thank the Housing Authority and point out that most housing authorities, if you approached them and asked for them to add chronic homeless people to the mix that they're taking, you'd find more resistance than we got here. I recognize that, and it, it actually helps us meet some of the qualifications that we have in terms of the 10-year plan. So it is a small drop in the bucket relative to the problem that's out there, but hopefully it is a model and is a demonstration that housing authorities can get more involved. We've fought like crazy just to have the Housing Authority consider some allocation of homeless for their Section Eights, and have had some real resistance from other housing authorities. So my compliments to the Housing Authority of the City of Ventura. I think they've, have had a good reputation of being progressive and farsighted in terms of thinking through this problem and stuff. So thank you very much, and appreciate the support of the board members as we go forward, and everybody that's been involved in this whole homeless issue and the 10-year plan and all of that. So, ready for a vote?
And I am looking at coming in August with at least conceptual approval of using that fire station site, so all we can do.
And that motion passes four to zero. And now, for one of the most enjoyable moments each year in the, in the board's agenda, is item 47, and that's a recommendation to recognize and honor the 2013 Training and Education Achievement Citizens. That's the Teach Awards for our out-of-home care scholars. And this is a great opportunity, and I see the attractive Linda Bowman back there in the back, who's going to come up and help us with this program. We have, put your hand up if you're here in the room to receive a Teach Scholarship right now, just so we, so everybody can get an idea of where you are, right? We have these tremendous youth here in front of us. I get to just come down and smile and have Linda have all the hard work in front of her in terms of keeping it all straight and stuff. But board members, sit back, enjoy, and see some of the most, some of the best investments that people in Ventura County can make in the youth here in front of us. So Linda, thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Supervisor Bennett, members of the board, and CEO Mike Powers. We are thrilled to be here once again today, and we thank the board for your support, as always. On a personal note, I'd like to say that I'm honored and thrilled to be here. Larry Matheny, our chair, is once again saving the world (laughs) over in another country. So he sends his best and wishes he could be here to join us. Today, we are honoring the recipients of the Teach Scholarships awards for 2013. This year, we gave out 25 awards. And a good portion of the youth are here this morning. Some are at work, and some are at some school commitments and internships that they're working on. But the Teach Foundation started back in 1994, just as a, as a brief footnote, by Johnny Donovan, who bestowed upon the county a $40,000 amount. And we have grown that in all this time. The Ventura County Community Foundation manages our funds, and they have done it so well that we are just a little under $1 million. We have two funds, and we are able to address all of our youth on a yearly basis. In 2010, we added, with the help of our community partners, the Martin V. Smith Family Foundation, Verizon, and Duke Potts of Technicolor. We added another endowment to that, which allowed us to address our students that are in higher education, so that we can support them more, and also past the age of 25. So we're doing some good things here in Ventura County, and we appreciate all your support. Also like to thank the Rotary Club of Ventura West Scholars this year. We ran a little bit short on the amount that we wanted and needed to give, and they stepped forward with a very large check. And we would like to acknowledge them and thank them this year for helping this happen for our students. Prior to calling up the students, I'd like to just recognize, if I may, Supervisor Bennett, the Teach committees in the room and the members. Could you just stand or give a, there you go, always. Always.
Stand up.
Stand up. They work, they work on this all year. Thank you so much.[1346.11][1346.11](Applause). And John Franklin in the back, he's the head of our milestones, which is a real good compliment to teach now. We're, we're hosting a real significant celebration of achievement for foster youth in Ventura County, so I just wanted to put a plug in for that, if I could. All right. So with that, this morning, I'm going to call each of the scholars up in recognition of the court mandates. We will not be using the last name. And after the services here today, I'm hoping that all those that participate with the foster youth, and I know that the board cannot come, we wish you could, we're going over to Marie Calliders, and they are once again hosting us for delicious pie. So please come if you're available. Okay, first and foremost, I have Angelica H.[1403.33][1403.33](Applause). Yoshi Y.[1407.11][1407.11](Applause).
Intern in my office?
Yay! Dominique M.[1430.11][1430.11](Applause). Jacqueline Stowe, oh, yes.[1439.11][1439.11](Laughter).
Proud of it, okay. Thank you.
Jennifer P.[1448.11][1448.11](Applause). Okay.
We're going to try to get a picture of everybody here. Here's Anna with the camera, Linda, come on over. Let's see, I'd like you to come over here and do these steps and stuff. The short ones in front, the long ones in back. Here we go. Come on over. Let's go this way, a little bit more, so you can see the steps. There we go. Come on, here we go. Put you right in the middle, we've got to tie on, right? There we go. And then you walk to the outside, there you go. Now, everybody take your Teach Scholarships, right? And hold it up like that, right? Nice in the pictures, so everybody can see you, see what they're doing, right? There you go. So, here we go. And now, everybody on the committee, would you please come up also and join us? Stay here, committee members, please. And Barry. Have John come on down too, please. Now, folks, turn your shoulders, we, now we can squeeze down, squeeze in some, squeeze in. You're in the middle in front.
Okay, wow. I'll be right back. Yeah.
Can you get Larry?
Yeah.
Thank you all. Dominique, you're back on.
Mr. Chair, you know, I just want to thank Linda and John Franklin and Sonia and the rest of the individuals and all the good work they've done. Thank you so much, Linda. Thank you. All right.
Okay, and presentation of the IT Department, and we're just a little bit behind. I'll let you get started, and I'll be right.
All right. Chair Bennett, members of the board, CEO Powers, for the record, Mike Pettit, IT Services. It's my privilege today to share with you our new county website. About eight years ago, we launched our current county website, so it's, it's time for a refresh. We embarked on a project in late November of last year involving many agencies and departments of the county in their leadership to design, come up with the design for a new website. A few key goals were chief leaders of that project. First of all, we wanted to align with the county's strategic plan objective. We want to increase our communications, the effectiveness of our communications with the public, and provide an easy way for them to access the services that we provide. Also, we wanted to make it simpler and easier for them as they come to our website. And lastly, we wanted to launch the site July 1st. So I'm here to, to announce that we are on schedule, and we will be launching the new site on July 1st. So goals are something that Ventura County is good at achieving. A couple key points with this project. First of all, I wanted to highlight the teamwork. This project represents a remarkable example of cross-agency teamwork, putting the county's customers first. So you'll see with the new site that the services have been reorganized. Instead of presenting them according to the county's organizational structure, the services on the website are largely organized in the area of need. So, and that'll be very prominent when you see the new design here shortly. Also, the simplicity of the new site. If you contrast our current site with the new site, you'll note that the information is much clearer and easier, and hopefully, it will mean fewer clicks for our public when they come to the site to access the services. And lastly, I want to... And lastly, I want to emphasize persistence. This effort to revitalize our website is not a one-and-done effort. In order to keep websites vital for information and services, that means it needs continuous care and feeding. And so part of the effort of this team was to identify those folks that are going to be maintaining the content as we go forward. So by no means is the cement dry with the website. It's going to be a living, breathing, vital project. And a side bonus, we saved about $120,000 through the implementation of the new technology that the website is hosted in. So that's always a nice bonus as well. Just some key points comparing the old site with the new site. We did a survey with the public in preparing for developing the new site and we received comments about the site describing it as busy and overwhelming and somebody actually used the word ugly. And so we were a little offended by that. But the new site, we believe is beautiful. Difficult to navigate, too many clicks to get where you need to go and too much knowledge of government structure is required to find the information. And just a side note, some of the savings are a little bit outdated in costly technology. So the new site, clean and clearly laid out, easy to locate content, more direct access to services. As I mentioned, the services are grouped by area of need versus agency or department. For those that still are used to government structure, we still provide that access. So it's really flexible for our customer base. And then improved features for the visually impaired. We have some features in there. If you, like me, I'm getting to the point where I need reading glasses and so that you can change the font size to make it larger. So some new features in there to make it more easily used. And then the new site you'll see showcases the beauty of Ventura County. We live and are really blessed to live in a beautiful county and we wanted to showcase that beauty with the new site. And so you'll see some of that in the new site. And it employs modern and efficient technology. Some new highlights, we have a mobile version of our site. And when I say mobile version, I'm not talking about the normal site you see on your computer, on your smartphone. We are talking about a site that's optimized for a smaller smartphone screen. And so you'll see a picture of that here shortly. Countywide calendar of events. We wanted to have a one-stop spot for our customers to come and see what's going on in the county. So you'll see things on that calendar, like some of the farmers markets around the county, some of the training events and opportunities for economic development and workforce development in the county on that calendar. So we're excited about that feature. New downloadable maps. We've had a lot of positive feedback from the public, different aspects of the public for maps with certain information, among them supervisory districts and other types of information throughout the county. We've stepped into the modern age. You can share links from our website with your social media site. So it makes it easy for the public to post content from our refer to content from our site with their own social media pages. And then lastly, we have Yellow Pages and departmental listings.
Yellow Pages, is that for real? Do we still have Yellow Pages?
Yes. Some people won't understand what that reference means. But for some of us, we'll still know what that means. Well, with that, I would like to turn it over, the reveal of the site to my deputy CIO. His team, he's over at Application Services, Rodney Lantier. His team took the design and all the content that the group came up with and did the technical work behind the scenes to make it real. So with that, have Rodney come up and share with you.
Good morning, Board. Mr. Powers. Before I reveal the new site, I wanted to remind everyone what the current site looks like. Here we go. As Mike alluded to, a little challenging to navigate, find the information you're looking for, kind of peppered or littered with various links and information visually not too appealing. We can call it ugly. I'm not too offended by that term. And with that, I'd like to reveal the new site. So this is... This is an overview of the page and I'll move quickly through. I have a few slides that will focus on certain areas of the page. But as you can see, front and center, beautiful scenic shots of the county. This is what we refer to as an image carousel. The image on the live site will change approximately every three seconds and rotate through various pictures throughout the county so we can focus different areas of the county or seasonal photos, whatnot. Focusing in on the top portion here, you'll find your traditional search box. Visitors to our site could easily locate data using keywords just like they would use Google. We have several categories to help visitors to the site to find the information they're looking for. We have five buttons above the image, as you can see, for government departments, emergency services, which includes sheriff, fire, office of emergency services and whatnot, employment, which is a popular destination on our current site, as well as a Board of Supervisors page. Down the left-hand side, we have various service offerings that I'll go into a little bit here. In the center of the page, you'll see county news, which mimics what we have today, which is a highlight on some of our press releases news. How do I, how do I pay a traffic citation? How do I register to vote? One click, two click, get to the information you need quickly. Okay, looks like the remote is... There we go. This is an example of what the visitor will see when they click on the Business Services button. As you notice, on the left-hand side, the button is highlighted, orange or California poppy is the standard color we've selected. And this is an example of some of these subcategories under Business Services. The one thing I'll point out on this page that is present on every page is this little toolbar that Mike alluded to on the top right-hand side under the buttons. You've got the share and bookmark. That allows you to easily email an article of interest. It also allows you to post the article on Facebook if you want. One click.
Mr. Chairman, you know that bottom icon, whatever you want to call it, the healthcare reform, that's extremely important. That's going to be probably used tremendously.
And that icon there, sir, is present on every page throughout the site. It'll never get buried. It's not lost. Always accessible.
Right in front of the public.
We wanted to emphasize that service.
Great.
Font size, Mike alluded to. Those of us needing reading glasses, the font size, we made it very easy. If you're on a page and the font happens to be too small, all you have to do is click on the little plus button.
And it brings it up.
Brings up bigger font. And of course, the print. Many of us like to print pages sometimes, carry the paper around. This is a printer-friendly version without all the graphics. Health and Human Services, just an example again of some of the subcategories under Health and Human Services. We have the Environment. We have many new categories under the Environment section. Calendar Events, as Mike alluded to, we, this is a new feature on the site that we are proposing. Calendar Events is color-coded. In this example here, the green entries on the calendar are for farmers markets. You have some highlights. We have the Board Supervisor Meetings in blue. We have, the Human Services Agency has their entries in purple and we can add as many as we need. And what this does, it allows individuals to view details for an event. And we built in functionality that if you use, for example, Gmail, Google Mail, you can click on one button and it'll automatically put that event on your personal Gmail account so you don't have to transcribe all the information. So that's a new feature with this site.
So it's going to be self-managed by agencies or specific people?
That is correct.
So, because that could, keeping up with everything going on is a challenge.
It can be. And some of these, for example, farmers markets are recurring events.
Sure.
It's very simple for us to put in one event, make it recurring for on a weekly, monthly basis, bi-weekly, whatnot. But that is correct. Each agency or the areas that are responsible for that, the calendar events can manage their own content. This page here is an example of the downloadable maps. Again, a new feature. We provide several file formats depending on the visitor to the site and what they are looking for. Yellow Pages, new feature to the site. Clicking on a letter will bring you to that section so you can get access to phone numbers for specific services here at the county. Again, this is driven off of our internal phone book, county phone book, easy access. It doesn't get stale. It's completely database-driven.
Are you also going to have other city phone numbers too or just county?
This is just county-based at this time.
What if somebody wanted to call the City of Oxnard or whatever? We don't go here.
We could reference it in our pages. That is correct, sir. Department Directory, as an example here, we have a drop-down box that would allow an individual to select a specific department. In this example here, we selected the CEO's office. The important thing I want to note here is not all staff members within a department are listed here. It's key individuals. And we have, again, like the calendars, we have individuals within each agency that can control who gets featured in this list here. Makes it a little bit more convenient to contact individuals within the various departments. Just another example here, we spoke about the Government button. Highlighting or hovering over that button shows you all the categories and entries that are available under Government. I'm not going to go through all of them in the best interest of time, but this is the Government section, if you will. And here's an example of the Board of Supervisors. So highlighting, selecting the Board of Supervisors entry above the image will bring you this page. Visitors to our site could click on an entry here and go to your respective pages.
Could you make the District 1 picture bigger?
And there we go. Finally, the last slide I wanted to show is our mobile version. This is a new feature. We do not have this today. What we did with the new site is we designed it to detect if a visitor to our site is using a smartphone, iPhone, Android, BlackBerry. When we detect that the visitor's using a phone, we redirect them to a mobile-friendly site. So this mobile-friendly site is always in sync with the master site, if you will, but it is a mobile-friendly, less graphics, a lot speedier and whatnot. And this is a feature that we're very proud of.
You just got to learn how to use it, right? Got to learn how to use it.
We believe that it's hopefully self-explanatory and easy to navigate, but...
Even I can use it.
Perfect.
Right, Laura?
Finally, a couple of things. The new site tracks statistics as our customers visit the site. And so we'll be able to continue to optimize the site and present that information that they're coming for the most. On the site, there's a spot, a couple of areas on the homepage that automatically adjust based on the traffic to the site and will present the most common pages or links right there on the homepage. So we're very excited about the new site. I do want to recognize the remarkable work of the team. A few people I want to call out in particular. Elaine Crandall did a fantastic job leading this club. And actually, I'd like them all to stand up. They're back here lending their support. We had representatives from a number of different agencies and all of your offices. So thank you very much for the commitment of time. And then again, Rodney Lantier and his team, Glenn Sahagan and Wally Waliani, there were a couple of the developers behind the scene that took these conceptual artistic designs and translated them into the technology. So very excited about that. And again, obviously, our CEO sponsorship of the project as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think we want to keep our comments brief as we have 11 o'clock APC and we still have our Workforce Investment Board. We want to give them as much time as possible. So pardon if our comments are not as appreciative, but this is really good news for us.
Thank you.
Great, good work.
Completely understood. Just remember to go to our new site July 1st, ventura.org, and tell all your friends about it. We're peppering the area with posters. We'll have press release, so.
And thank the team.
Mr. Powers?
Just echo the comments. Appreciate the passion of the team that did this, the quality. The county is high-tech and innovative and now our website reflects that and service-oriented, which is key. Related to that, as we transition to the next item, how easy is it to find the WIB on there?
Yeah, the WIB link, very easily.
It would have been easy before.
Two clicks. Go to the homepage, click on the Employment button and the next page has the link for WIB. So I think that's down about three clicks from the current site. So we reduced it by about three.
Employment service.
Great.
So make the most you can receive.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now it's, we're at item 49 and that's our... Oh, moved to receive and file and it's been done and it's... And it's passed. So receiving file study session by the Workforce Investment Board and a presentation regarding a strategic workforce development plan. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Bennett, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Powers, and members of the county staff. I'm Alex Rivera. I'm Chair of the Workforce Investment Board of Ventura County. And joining me here this morning are other members of our Workforce Investment Board, including HSA Director Barry Zimmerman on the other side of the room, as well as WIB staff. We're pleased to be able to share some time with you here this morning. And in the interest of time, I'll try to keep my comments brief and get through the presentation in a little less time than what the Board had allotted. I want to preface my remarks by first apologizing for the tone of my voice. I'm getting over a little bit of a cold, so that baritone quality is not the norm. Also, I brought my bottle of water here, so if I pull a Marco Rubio moment, you'll know why. This morning, we're going to talk about a number of different things briefly. I want to be able to spend some time talking about how federal workforce investment funds are put to good use here in the county, to talk briefly about the new state requirements for California Workforce Investment Boards, and then finally, to share with you a little bit more information about the Ventura County Regional Strategic Workforce Development Plan for your consideration and approval. For those who may not be familiar, the WIB is a group of Ventura County leaders appointed by your Board to do a number of things, primarily to administer federal workforce investment act funds, to oversee WIA programs for job seekers, youth, and employers, and finally, to engage a wide variety of private and public entities in building a strong workforce here in Ventura County. Here's a brief summary of our WIA funding status. This past year, we received a little more than $7.1 million in WIA core funds. In the coming year, we're going to see a decrease down to $6.8 million with reductions in all funding categories. The decreases are primarily as a result of the federal budget sequestration. And if Congress continues sequestration in the fall with the new budget, we expect another reduction of about another 5%. This slide shows a quick summary of what's been happening this year. In the first nine months of the current fiscal year, our program providers have enrolled a total of 1,084 participants in WIA programs. The required outcomes for adults and dislocated workers include getting a job, keeping the job, and overall average increase in earnings. For youth, we're evaluated on gains in literacy and numeracy, placement in education or employment, and attainment of a degree or a certificate. And thanks to the great work of all of our program providers, we expect to meet all performance requirements by June 30th, the end of our program year. It's important to emphasize the fact that we're striving to meet all those performance requirements because doing so enables us to be eligible for additional state grant monies when they're available. We've also served other job seekers and employers, and I know I often get questions about the number of folks here in the county that are served. In the first nine months of this year, we've also served more than 24,000 individuals who've received WIA services through the Job and Career Centers scattered across the county. We've had a number of employers who've received layoff aversion services from our contracted partner, the Economic Development Collaborative of Ventura County. Of those employers, there were 269 at-risk jobs that were retained. And among those jobs, 45, rather, were retentions that involved incumbent worker training. We've had a number of businesses with more than 1,000 employees that have received transition assistance services during the course of layoffs. One of the important priorities in the county is to see about developing workforce pipelines that will benefit job seekers and employers throughout the county. In support of our allied health employers and workers, this year, we've reassessed priorities for hard-to-fill, high-demand jobs, which are listed in kind of yellow on the right-hand side of this slide. We've also identified the priorities for filling gaps in education and training and those are listed in the yellow section on the left-hand side of this slide. And probably most importantly, we've engaged partners in business, education, and labor to help us develop those strategies for closing those gaps. Similarly, we've heard the message loud and clear from our area manufacturing employers who've stated continually that it's increasingly hard to find qualified workers to fill those jobs. And so in order to fill those gaps, we've worked hard on employer-valued certificates. We've reached out to increase awareness of careers in manufacturing. We've promoted opportunities for internships and site visits. And most recently, this past year, we've formed the And most recently, this past year, we've formed the Manufacturing Roundtable of Ventura County. I believe Chairman, Supervisor Zaragoza had a chance to stop in and visit with us over at Haas Automation a couple of months ago, and this Manufacturing Roundtable is intended to engage businesses in the regional efforts to support our manufacturing sector. On this slide, we share a little bit of information about Clean Green, and it covers a wide range of workforce opportunities. This year, we determined that the current workforce development priority for tourism and hospitality is business growth, because we know that's going to lead to job growth. We've advocated for a more robust regional filming resource to help attract filming to our area. We've identified workforce challenges relating to business compliance with environmental regulations, and we've begun to refocus our efforts to align with and engage business partners in new California definition of green jobs, which you'll hear a little bit more about in just a moment. For our Workforce Investment Board here in the county, outreach is critical for developing a competitive workforce. For business outreach, we've used radio, print ads, and online messaging, I should say, to promote on-the-job training, the Manufacturing Roundtable of Ventura County. We're here for a reason, which is a continuation of the regional Ventura County Grows Business Initiative that the WIB launched a couple of years ago. Other outreach has included our Workforce Wednesday Broadcast, which are a series of monthly live interviews that are broadcast on KVTA News Talk Radio.
Alex, how do you get the message out to the youth? Is that through the radio, and how? How do you do it for jobs?
We get it out through a number of different avenues. I mentioned the live broadcasts that are done monthly, Workforce Wednesdays, on the radio. We reach out online through Facebook, through our website. Likewise, we send out a bimonthly newsletter to...
To the schools.
Pardon me?
To the schools also.
We send it out to schools, we send it out to businesses, we send it out to a number of business and community leaders, over 7,600 different leaders throughout the community to keep them apprised of what's going on.
That's great, that's good.
Right. We also do the VC Jobs with the Future, which is a new one-stop careers website for teens and young adults here in the area. And just recently, last week, we had public recognition for champions of job growth, collaborative action, and youth opportunities in leadership as a result of our annual WIB awards. I'll make note of the fact that one of the recipients of our 2013 awards was Ventura County Medical Center and Santa Paula Hospital's Auxiliary for Youth Opportunity Award. These are some of the different ways that we've been reaching out to ensure people are aware of the work that's being done by our Workforce Investment Board. The types of programs and services that I've been describing are in compliance with the federal workforce investment back, but as I mentioned at the outset, there's some new requirements that the California Workforce Investment Board has laid out for us. Recently, the California Legislature, along with the Office of the Governor, created some new policies and, as you might imagine, some unfunded mandates with regard to our local Workforce Investment Board, what we're going to be held accountable for in performance that goes beyond the federal requirements. The purpose of this particular part of the presentation is to help us to drive California's economy through regional workforce development that is sustained by regional private as well as public resources. Under the banner of shared strategy for a shared prosperity, the overarching goal for us is to be able to realign the state's workforce systems for a retraining economy that offers everyone a high quality of life. The launch of the state's strategy was just recently approved by the U.S. Department of Labor earlier this month, and the California Workforce Investment Board now has a new five-year strategic workforce plan that includes many of the new state requirements. By July 1st, which is coming up very soon, local WIBs like ours here in Ventura County have to submit a five-year plan that is aligned with the state plan and begin implementation come July 1st. Local WIBs will be notified by our state WIB by October 1st whether or not it's improved. And so I want to emphasize the importance of considering and approving the local regional strategic workforce development plan. The role of the local WIB has expanded under California's new strategy, so in addition to providing the oversight that I mentioned at the outset, our local WIB is going to be required to be a convener, an analyst, a broker, a community voice, and a capacity builder for workforce development here in the region. Over the last several months, the Ventura County WIB has sought input from representatives from business, from education, economic development, labor, different community organizations, as well as government, and we've worked hard to ensure that we've developed a strategic, practical, and flexible plan that's going to align with the state requirements yet still be adaptable to the changing needs of our region here in the county. A copy of that plan has been submitted for your consideration and approval today, and I'd like to provide you with a very brief overview. Setting the stage for the plan is the vision statement, and the first part of the vision statement is something that has been consistent with the vision that has guided our workforce investment over the past several years. But the second part of the vision statement includes ongoing skills attainment, regional growth industry sectors, and a braided-leveraged workforce system, which you'll be hearing that terminology more and more. The local Workforce Investment Board goals, strategies, and objectives align with those of the California WIB. In terms of the business and industry goal, the focus is on high-demand sectors here in our region. The adult goal focuses on increasing the number of adults who receive sector-related credentials or degrees in jobs. The youth goal focuses on an increasing number of students who graduate from high school and are ready for post-secondary education or a career. The system goal focuses on aligning, integrating, and continuous improvement of the multiple entities that are involved in our regional workforce system. In alignment with the state plan, the regional strategies have four major components that include key stakeholders, priority industry sectors, skilled workers, and regional sustainability. To achieve our regional goals, we'll need engagement and commitment from business and labor, education, economic development, government, and community organizations. For the priority sectors, although we have multiple sectors that contribute to the vitality of our local economy, we need to identify focus areas for our plan in order to focus really the limited resources that we have to work with. In terms of skilled workers, as regional partners, we need to ensure that a skilled, flexible workforce is ready to meet the ongoing needs of local businesses. And finally, the local areas are being challenged to leverage and sustain private and public sources of funding for regional workforce systems. Another new requirement for our local WIBs is the development of a business service plan. In the plan for Ventura County that you've been asked to consider, you'll see four components: business services, skills gaps, public and private sector collaboration, and layoff aversion. For business services, the focus is on employer support through leveraged and braided resources on-on-the-job training. For the skills gaps, we're required to identify education and training investment needs in sectors with a potential for job growth. For private and public sector collaboration, there are multiple entity partnerships, investments, and systems that are needed to address the regional workforce needs here on an ongoing basis. And in terms of layoff aversion, we're going to continue to strengthen the early warning systems in the business services that we've continued to provide to help avoid layoffs of employees here in the county. With regard to the priority sectors, the good news is that we've begun work on our business sectors. For the strategic plan, our WIB Committee on Allied Health will become the healthcare committee. Their focus is going to be on workforce needs relating to healthcare reform, and we'll engage a broader range of healthcare-related businesses. I believe Supervisor Zaragoza had mentioned in the previous presentation about the importance of healthcare reform and the provision of services here in the county, and we want to be able to support that. We'll also continue our efforts to secure non-WIA funding for a startup of a clinical lab field program, working with Cal State Channel Islands and the Hospital Association of Southern California. In the area of manufacturing, we're going to continue to be a primary focus for our workforce efforts, engaging more manufacturing businesses. It's going to be essential for our ongoing collaboration to ensure that we continue to develop industry-recognized certificates, that we engage the manufacturers here in the region, and that we continue to support youth outreach, ongoing training, and facilities and equipment, focusing not just on public funds but private funding as well. As I mentioned earlier, the WIB is going to adopt the work of the Clean Green Committee and align with the new California definition of green. That focus ensures that workforce development relates to areas such as renewable energy, recycling, energy efficiency, natural and sustainable product manufacturing, and education and compliance. The definition of clean green here applies to jobs in several sectors in Ventura County, so we'll be able to take a multiple-sector approach to engage a wide range of businesses. Likewise, we already have in development an energy efficiency technician training program that we've begun to develop in concert with IBW Local 952. Another section of the strategic plan is related to adult strategies, and the areas that we're focusing on, the four components are apprenticeships, sector training, career pathways, and transition support. In the area of apprenticeships, we're looking for registered and approved apprenticeships that will be developed and made available for the priority sectors here in the region. For sector training, we've identified the funding priorities for sector-focused training, and we'll be focused on region-value degrees and credentials. The career pathways that we've begun will need to strengthen the education and business connections to ensure that we raise awareness of those priority sectors. And finally, in terms of transition support, we're going to focus on spending time in adult remediation and providing support for dislocated workers that continues to be an issue here in the county. Nearing the end here, the California Youth Strategy Components add a new dimension to our WIB role, the facilitation and development of private and public sector partnerships to be able to help reduce the high school dropout rate.
You know, I think that's really important, that high school dropout, you know, working with the public-private partnerships, I, that's extremely important.
It absolutely is. We've begun dialogue with the Ventura County Office Education with some of the various school superintendents, all with the aim to see what it is that we can do to leverage the resources that we have to bring that dropout rate down.
And connect that with the apprenticeship program.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Good.
We're also looking to acquire funding to reengage disconnected youth in education and employment, to continue to create pathways and experiential learning opportunities, and to encourage the attainment of degrees and credentials that are important to the regional business sectors here in our area. So in summary, 2012, 2013 has been a good year for WIA support of job seekers, for youth, and employers here in the county. The new regional workforce strategic plan represents a collaborative effort and is a working document upon which Ventura County community can build. Members of the WIB sincerely appreciate the ongoing support of your board and respectfully request that you continue to encourage your constituents to access the free, I'll emphasize that, WIA programs and services that are offered, to continue to encourage employers to provide work opportunities for youth, to approve the Ventura County Regional Strategic Workforce Development Plan for 2013 through 2017, and to support congressional reauthorization of the Workforce Investment Act. We have a number of different avenues to access more information, including the various websites that you see on this slide. We invite you and others to visit these sites, and on behalf of the WIB, our sincere thanks for your time and attention this morning, and I'll be happy to respond to any questions or comments with the remaining time that we have.
Do we have any questions, sir?
The only question.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
You said about you had some mandated additional items that you have to perform. Is there any funding for the unfunded mandated items?
Right. Those are the requirements that are coming down from the state WIB. As I mentioned earlier, the California Legislature and the Office of the Governor have imposed new mandates that go over and above what the federal requirements have imposed, that we are working to integrate into the activities that we've already been involved with. We began several months ago in reaching out to various groups and organizations to say, we're going to need help, we can't do it alone. In some instances, such as trying to reduce the dropout rate, we have very little leverage as a board to be able to make changes in, say, the curriculum that's adopted in the educational system. But working in partnership with the different entities here in the county, we're going to look to be one of the high-performing WIBs.
Is that going to be a yearly reporting item?
Yes, it will be. And I would imagine our incoming Chair, Mike Soulay, who's sitting in the front row here, next year will be standing up here being able to report on that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Powers?
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation I had in my office, too, to explain this a little bit more in depth, and seeing that you can take a more active role, and being required really to take a more active role, and looking at one of the new roles was the word convener, and I had suggested that maybe you look at putting forward a job fair. I think that would help with both the, you know, engaging the youth and helping them, but also helping the employers. And the county itself is one of the biggest employers.
Yes.
And so maybe it's something that we can start in assisting with the county, too, because there are positions that we have difficulty in filling, and that might be a good opportunity to get out to the students, the, you know, graduating college and people who are looking for new careers, so they know that it's available, and maybe, you know, assist the county, too, in being able to fill those spots. So I know that's something you can maybe start with the county, but also with the private sector, too, I think, and now's a good time for that.
It is, absolutely. I had a chance to debrief with Executive Director Moore following her meeting with you, and she had mentioned the idea of job fairs. I also know that our WIB has been active in the past in convening youth summits to bring together different constituencies that are interested in helping the youth and young adults in our area to be able to find those employment opportunities as well.
One last thing. When I met with Shaw, too, one of the items that I shared with her is to working with the CBOs, the...
Community-based organizations.
Current CBOs, and then maybe smaller CBOs that need assistance to get the word out and to put, you know, our youth and our at-risk jobs and so forth, to assist them to assist those folks. And I think it's important that we work with the smaller CBOs, too.
I wholeheartedly agree. I've had meetings with some of the leaders from some of the smaller community-based organizations. Our Workforce Investment Board has worked on a couple of pilot projects with a couple of the organizations, partnering them with some of the larger groups so that they can get the experience.
That partnership, I think, is key. You know, if we can get that partnership to have some large organization that can help the smaller CBOs attain, you know, the competency to help us.
There are a lot of well-intentioned organizations here in the county that, with a little bit of additional information, support, I think they can do so much more for the folks here in our region.
Great. Supervisor Shaw?
Just say thank you. I know it's a lot of work to go through strategic planning and to lay this out as well as the board has, and as engaged as the board has been, and the board being all volunteer and paid mightily, but the goals that you've set out and the strategies to convene, facilitate, to braid, whatever the new word is, are welcome. And I think we, as a county, work best when we coordinate and partnership, and this really does put out an excellent guide and roadmap for all of us to help our workforce. So thank you, appreciate the work.
You're welcome. We appreciate those kind words. It is indeed quite a task to pull together a strategic plan like this. I give credit not just to our WIB staff, but as you've indicated, our volunteers on the board, who have spent innumerable hours pulling together the plan, all with the intention of knowing that we want to be able to meet the requirements, we want to be able to ensure that it's a robust plan, and one that's going to be a working document for the years to come.
Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chairman Bennett. Just appreciate the great summary. I think the work of the WIB has been important, but it's going to be even more important going forward. And as Supervisor said, the Affordable Care Act, huge requirements, public and private sector, we're seeing just in the county, you know, probably close to 200, 300 positions right there, so tremendous needs, and you're already heading in that direction, which I think is great. It does dovetail, or excuse me, braid nicely with the work that this board is doing as well in terms of economic development, trying to be more business-friendly and match the local business needs to the training and educational opportunities that we have here in the county. So I appreciate that, and we have, we're looking at putting on a county expo coming up, and we'd like to partner with you in terms of job opportunities here at the county and career opportunities here, public and private, so we'll be talking to you about that as well.
We'd welcome that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to get on your radar screen. We also have an effort to try to increase just our whole... We also have an effort to try to increase just our whole connectivity speed here that we have, and, you know, it's an area where you can fall behind, and it makes a big difference in terms of your business competitiveness. And so, to the extent that the web can lend its voice to try to encourage all the things that can happen for us to have the fastest connections in the world, is what we really need to have here in Ventura County. I would like to echo Supervisor Long's appreciation for the members of the web, volunteers that have nothing else to do in life except to work on web. But really, it's, America used to lead the world in training workers back in the 1800s, when a free public education was the key. Today, America lags the rest of the world in terms of worker training, and we don't have a good focus, and really, the national effort is the Workforce Investment Act and the efforts of you folks on the Workforce Investment Board. So, you're at the vanguard, is this the best way for us to do it? The people we're competing with are doing it far more intensively, but thank you very much. It's, you know, an excellent strategic plan that you've pulled together, and let's hope we can all do a great job of implementing it, but I really appreciate it.
We thank you.
And Mr. Chair, excellent presentation, too, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. Although we just come once a year to give the annual state of the report, we encourage the ongoing dialogue with the board.
And we're paying attention throughout the year.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So, we have a motion by Supervisor Long, and a second by Supervisor Ergoza, to receive and file and authorize the chair to sign, and all the other recommendations that are part of this motion.
You've raised the bar.
Thank you.
Chief, I think it's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And that motion passed? Great, all right, good. Okay, and we're now ready for our Air Protection Control District meeting, and then we'll go into.
Know about the county retirement plan, VASERA. Absolutely a great benefit that we all have. In addition to that, you know, people have Social Security, most people have Social Security, the public employees do not, the safety members do not have Social Security, but all the other members have Social Security. Plus, you have your own personal savings, and then we have our deferred compensation program, which we hope a lot of employees take advantage of as part of their long-term savings. Our 401K shared savings program, we have two. We have 401K, and we have 457. They're both titled after IRS code, but it was established in 1985. We have a little, almost 8,000 eligible participants, and about 5,700 are active. And you see the pie chart, 70, almost 75% of our employees are participating in the 401K shared savings plan. Total assets, almost $500 million in this plan. So, you know, when we're talking, and we'll see the next one, the 457 plan, about 25% roughly of our participants are participating in the 457 plan. The main reason the difference is that on the 401K plan, we have matches. And significant matches in some regard, because you don't even have to, if you put in 1% in some, depending on the union, if you put in 1% of your salary, you'll get a 1% county match. You have 100% return on your money without even taking any risk. So, in that regard, you could put in the safest, safest investment out there in the 401K plan, and you're going to get 100% return on some of your dollars. So, this 457 plan, we do not have matches, so that's why there's less participation, and so most of the participation is in the 401K plan. So, we established in 1975.
Why are people choosing the 457 plan at all, then?
Because there's limits on the amount you can contribute to each plan, and if you combine them, depending on your age and those types of things, you can double up.
And you can do Roth this way, also?
That's correct. Roth IRA is through the 457. Plus, until about, I would say about eight, eight years ago, maybe 10 years ago, you couldn't double up, but now they've included that, so you'll see a little bit more participation in the 457 plan compared to in prior years. But eligible participants is a little higher than in the 401K plan because of the fact that 401K, I think per diem nurses and the county residents are not entitled to go into the 401K plan, but they are entitled to go in the 457 plan. So, a little bit more eligible participants, a couple thousand active participants, and total assets, $126 million. So, you combine the two, we have $620 million worth of assets, which is significant when we're talking about the administrator and the investment manager, they are very interested in our assets. These are union participations chart in the 401K. You can see the majority, like CJAC, for example, has 100% participation, Spovac also. Some have an automatic, non-matching participation, so we'll see 100% participation in those particular unions. Some unions, CJAC tend to be on the higher, you know, they're generally the higher paid, so they'll have a little bit better participation. Management has a little bit better participation. The firemen's is a lower participation, 41%, because they don't have a match. Fire union is the only union that does not have a match in the 401K. 457, and that's why, they partake in the Fireman's Association, 57%, they're the highest on the union participation in the 457 plan. So, that's because they don't get a match, they were initially involved in 457. Plan features, we have 19, what we call core investments, that are monitored by the Deferred Compensation Committee, and we'll get back, we'll get into the Deferred Compensation Committee in a little bit. 13 age-based lifecycle plans, and those are the Fidelity Freedom Funds primarily. We have a mutual fund window, where we have over 240 investment options, and it's kind of unique to Ventura County, we have such a large number of investment options in that regard. We have the, out of the 240, about 100, I think 130 or so are Fidelity Funds. There's also 110 non-Fidelity Funds in that mutual fund window. And even in the 19 core investments options, even though Fidelity is our plan administrator, not all of those funds, and even our core options, are Fidelity Funds. The self-directed brokerage account, that is, you can invest in basically stocks, bonds, whatever you want out there, and you go onto this, the brokerage link, and you can invest in actual stocks, individual stocks, if you want. That's for our more sophisticated investors, and you have to sign up specifically to go into the brokerage link, and it's actually limited in the number of dollars that you can participate within that brokerage link, based on the size of your portfolio. But the overall rating for the brokerage link, and it's a very good rank, quite highly with Smart Money, and it's a very good tool for our employees. The key difference with the brokerage link, if you go out there in the brokerage link, you can invest in any mutual fund, basically, that there is. However, you're going to be probably paying retail rates for those mutual funds, versus within our portfolio, and then we have a number of mutual funds that are available that have deeply discounted rates, and we'll get into those a little bit. Some more plan features, total assets, you see $622 million. The core lineup, which we, again, is those 19 investments that are actually monitored by the Deferred Comp Committee, about $237 million. The Freedom Funds, the target-based plans, where people basically set their money in, and it's geared toward your retirement date. So, they kind of do a self-asset allocation, depending on your age and when you expect to retire, they will allocate those dollars. So, they being the Fidelity Freedom Funds. Mutual Fund Window has about 250, almost $250 million in it. See, there's quite a bit of participation within that mutual fund window. And then the brokerage link, again, limited, not limited, but limited by the fact that it's more sophisticated investors, frankly. This is just to show you, institutional and K shares provided, what we're looking at from a cost standpoint, relative to a mutual fund, if you want to go out there and buy it in retail. For example, we have almost $61 million in assets in the Fidelity Contra Fund. If we're in, if we, being the county as a whole, were paying in retail dollars, we'd be paying $450,000 a year for asset management for that mutual fund. We pay .69, about almost 70 basis points for that, so we save about $30,000, we being employees, actually, it comes back down to the employees, are paying $30,000 or less for this one particular Contra Fund. So, that's the value of the institutional pricing that we will give to the employees, that's passed down through our employees. The mutual fund window has an open architecture, they can invest in a number of different mutual, trading mutual funds, and there's also professionally managed account service. If an employee wants to have, they pay a certain fee, they have the option to have actual professional managers manage their account through Fidelity. These are some of the participant resources that we have within the website. We have a microsite, which is really geared toward the county of Ventura. It really integrates the county and Fidelity and their services. The net benefits, it's basically open 24 hours a day, 24/7. We do have consultations with Fidelity representatives regularly, and we have a couple face-to-face investor centers in TO and Santa Barbara that people can attend. Coming back again, the participant resources, this is just some of the utilization, some of the phone calls, about 2,500, almost 3,000 phone calls during the last year to the Fidelity line, and over 65, almost 6,500 website hits for the Fidelity. So, this is just utilization of the Fidelity services that we have for the employees. Deferred Comp Committee, that oversees the entire operations, the negotiation with the outside consultants and Fidelity, and making sure that we're in line with the tax ramifications relative to those two. Myself, I'll be the chair, Kelly Shirck from the Treasury Tax Collector, our esteemed Assistant Art Controller, Jeff Berg is also on, and then John Polich from the County Council, who is the resident expert as far as the 401K legal terms. So, he is quite a benefit to us, making sure we stay out of legal trouble. Again, we're planned fiduciaries overall. We were appointed by your board as a planned administrator, and we monitor the core options, those 19, we do monitor those on a regular basis. Every quarter, we get reports, both from Fidelity Investments, plus now that we've hired the outside consultant, they also report. And basically, the idea is to try to get the best options for the employees within that core with a good mix of investments. We also, just recently, within the next, last year, as part of your board's request to have a little bit closer look at the Deferred Comp Administration, we had a comprehensive plan review conducted by Vincent Galindo at Amherich, Arnerich, excuse me, Arnerich-Messina, and he evaluated all the fees and costs associated with the county. And again, like I said, Vincent is here today, if there are any specific questions for Vincent. He looked at the investment lineup for making sure that that was appropriate lineup, and looking at the performance and the fund and fees, expenses associated with that lineup. And then, of course, the investment policy, make sure that the investment policy overall that our committee has adopted, and your board has actually adopted, is sound and effective. And also assisted Patty Doughty from our office with the employee survey. Now, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Patty, who actually has done most of the work here anyway, so she at least ought to be able to say something. I tend to enjoy standing up here, so, but I'll let Patty cover the employee survey aspect, and, go ahead, Patty.
Good afternoon, board, Mr. Powers. As Paul spoke to, we did a comprehensive plan review in partnership with Arnerich, and as part of that, the committee really wanted to take a holistic view of how satisfied our participants with the whole plan, the plan features, the investments, the Fair Comp staff, and Fidelity. So, we did an employee survey. The survey included 26 questions, and we covered all aspects, investments, plan features, Fidelity, as I mentioned, Fair Comp program, and staff. We had over 700 participants participate in the survey, which was a pretty good response. Of 581 of those, or 81% of the respondents, were participating in the plan, but we also had about 119 that were not participating in the plan. So, we were able to get an idea of why they weren't participating, and what they need to see in the plan in order to participate. So, overall satisfaction with Fidelity, over 60% of the participants are satisfied or very satisfied with Fidelity as the provider. 5% are somewhat dissatisfied or very dissatisfied, so things are, people are happy with Fidelity. Things are looking good for them. Reasons for non-participating, 52% feel that they cannot afford it, and then about 50% don't understand the plan or don't understand investing. And then what they would like to see changed in order to participate, increased education was 46%, so definitely clearly something that we need to look at. And 36% more assistance in the enrollment process. Satisfaction with the numbers, types, and diversities of investments, as Paul mentioned, we do have a very robust plan, we have a lot of investment options for participants, and over about 50% are very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the investment elections that are offered to them. Satisfaction with the resources, very high satisfaction with the call center, 62%, 70% are either somewhat satisfied or satisfied with the one-on-one consultations that we offer here on-site, and we're also now branching out and getting off-site to different areas with our one-on-one consultations with Fidelity. And then 53% or 31% are satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the Fidelity website. Fidelity has a very robust technology plan, and our participants really like the technology, as was seen in the utilization versus phone versus web. They like the access that they're given, and Fidelity is working on new improvements all the time. We actually had an opportunity to visit their Technology Center in Boston, and it was very impressive, their testing. And for this, for plan pricing, I will turn it back over to Mr. Durst.
Thank you. And what we've done in the process is that part of the deal is, we did get good response from the, obviously, 800 responses from the employees, which is actually very good, in our opinion, but I think what it did tell us is that we probably need a little bit more education for the employees. Plan pricing structure, we, right now, we're paying, right now, we're paying a fixed base fee of nine basis points on total plan assets. So, you see that, the way it works is we have 400, roughly speaking, we have $465 million of 401K assets, we have $2.7 million in total fees. That's, if you look at all the fees, each of the individual mutual funds, that would be the charge that they would have. Then the total record-keeping fees of $905,000, and then we have an offset of 19 basis points to give us down to the, right there, the $419,000 in this column here, that's the total charge for the administration of our fees. So, we get an offset of $486,000 from Fidelity for that fee.
So, Paul, do we know what the individuals that go separately pay?
Well, it depends on what you're, if, there's different fees for each of the funds. If you're in a mutual fund that is, let's say it's a small-cap, foreign, local Vietnamese fund, it's going to have a higher rate than a Vanguard or a PIMCO fund, or something like, you know, a Vanguard All Market Fund that they just index. It's going to have a lot higher cost, so the fees will be a little higher. So, overall, it's about $2.7 million the employees pay in fees.
So, that individual that's processing separately has to do a lot of work, I mean, they could have to, on top of the moving money around and...
Right, and there's a lot of fees involved relative to, if you're short-term, there's might be a trading fee, a different thing, so, you know, it's a long-term investment for a lot of, in a lot of ways, so you want to be careful of not switching in, you want to look at the cost, you want to look at the fees. You definitely want to look at the fees, and we're trying to maintain the fees, and we have a number of platforms and investments that have very low fees relative to the overall. If you go in an index fund, it's going to be a lot less than a non-indexed.
And in our case, or the majority are, that's, you do the finance, who does the picking of the proper investments?
Individuals. Individuals have the opportunity to pick whatever investment they want. As the committee, the committee will not recommend, but we monitor 19 core funds.
Okay.
So, there's a top row, so to speak, of core funds that the R committee monitors, and so, we're saying, we're not recommending those funds necessarily, but we're saying, what we're doing is we're keeping an eye on those also, besides you keeping an eye on those, we also keep an eye on them to make sure that the fees are good, the return is good, the management is solid.
fees are good, the return is good, the management is, is solid and consistent, those types of things.
And someone that doesn't want to even play around with it, just leave it there and then, and then go with a fixed rate or an annuity rate or...
They have, the options are basically unlimited. You know, as sophisticated as you want to be, or as simple as you want to be, there's, there's the options that are out there for the employees.
Okay.
So basically, that, the $485,000, $486,000 are available to use to offset our planned administrative costs. That comes back to as a rebate from the county, to the county, excuse me, and used to, in the past, we charged employees between $5, $5 and $10 a quarter for administrative fees to spread the cost of the administrative, you know, Patty's salary, she's paid higher than she, than you, than she leads on. So, but the, we spread that cost across the entire, we were paying between, the employees were paying between $5 and $10 a quarter. Now that fee is gone because of this rebate that we get back from, from the Fidelity, from a management's standpoint. So we don't, we don't charge, we don't charge the employees a quarterly fee at all. The plan pricing structure, this is what we've negotiated with ourselves and in, with Vince, we decreased the nine basis points to eight basis points. So that's going to save us another, us being the county and the employees, another $60,000. So we've negotiated that down. Arnerich did a survey of a number of their, they, they are consultants to a number of different 401K and 457 plans in the, in the government industry. And they've looked at that, and eight basis points is about as low as they've seen. So in that regard, we're getting a very, very good, low rate as far as our administrative costs. So the Fidelity's come down to the eight basis points. And the, like I said, if we saw, if we went through the formal RFP process, we may, we would probably see bids ranging from eight to nine basis points. That's, that's the information we're getting. The cost of sending out an RFP would be at least six, we estimate be about $60,000, not including our staff time. So that would just be to hire consultants and that type of thing to get the RFP. Eight point, eight basis points, as stated here, is reasonable and competitive. And the, we've also negotiated an additional increase onsite education, which we, again, we think, we're trying to stress a little bit more edu, the education piece for the employees to make sure that they understand with, understand the system, understand the benefit that they're receiving. And we increased from, we doubled the onsite education days with, with Fidelity to come and visit us. These are just the comparisons from, from Arnerich that they, that they were seeing in their RFPs. See, we're in the $550 million range. They're seeing, the open architecture would be, would be us on the far-right column. They would see eight, eight to 13 basis points as far as their fees. These are the plan enhancements that we've done in the last year or two. We, Patty. But, but we've worked, worked with Fidelity to decrease fees as we go through the process. This is not something new. This is something we've been working toward. The revenue reimbursement credit, I noted earlier, $486,000. The additional one paces, so we, $666,000 of our reduction in charges. We expect about $500,000 a year just from that institutional fund pricing, as I noted before, since we get a institutional charge, institutional rate for our employees rather than a, so our, our employees are saving another, in their charges, about a half million dollars a year versus a retail, retail fund. About one point, almost 1.17 million dollars a year in savings for the county. And basically, the employees are saving that in, in charges. And enhanced service commitment, I noted before, waiver participant fee, $412,000 for next year. We're not going to be charging participants that. We have highly utilization of the windows, mutual fund windows. And participant satisfaction is very positive with Fidelity. And Fidelity has what we consider to be, and what the consultants consider to be, industry-leading tools and resources. So in that regard, what we are, what we as a, an office and we as the Deferred Comp Committee are recommending is that not to conduct an RFP at this time, to go out. And we think that the rates provided by Fidelity are fair and reasonable, certainly at, at the low end of reasonable. Participant satisfaction, and we haven't, we haven't identified any real specific issues with Fidelity, other than I think internally, we do need to expand a little bit on the educational, educational aspect, and our plan is to do that. Potential cost to conduct an RFP not create, may not create any value to the plan. And I think the other issue is that, making the employees uneasy, I think if you start looking at changing from Fidelity to another one, to another provider of services, it's going to be a big issue for employees. And to change over and to try to tie in all of the investments that they currently have to new investments under a new plan administrator is a significant undertaking for employees. As a matter of fact, we've had, we have a number of employees, and we've tried to notify the employees for, for quite some time, that at one point in time, Fidelity Magellan was in our, in our core funds. And Fidelity Magellan, for years, was not doing so well. So we notified everybody that we're pulling it out of our core funds because we, because of return issues and because of issues that Fidelity Magellan was having. And so we pulled it out of our core funds. It's still, people can still invest in it. As a matter of fact, there are still a number of people that have Fidelity Magellan as their only single investment. And that would not, you know, again, we don't recommend investments. What we do try to tell employees that we will monitor certain ones, and we will let you know when they are falling out of favor with the committee. And we've, we notify the employees at that. I guess the point I'm trying to make is that it's very difficult to get some employees to act on their investments, even though it's in their best interest to, to act on those investments. So to try to make a huge change from, from current administrator to a new administrator would be a significant issue.
Yeah, and that, that just reminds me, inertia is, is the number one issue when it comes to all of these investment plans, et cetera. People don't change, they don't, and all that. One of the biggest inertia problems is to get people to actually even do the first initial investment. And I know quite a few companies are going to the point where you have to opt out, but otherwise you're in. And, and I actually think that's something that we ought to consider as we look at our negotiations and everything else is, is, doesn't mean you have to be in, but you got to pick up that pen and write, "I want out," rather than write, "I want in." And our, you know, our employees, particularly with the match and everything else, our employees would be better off. It's just, I mean, the data is overwhelming, how much it's gotten people to start saving, and young people and all that. You know, if it happens right off the bat when they're hired, they don't even notice it, and that it's, all of a sudden, they've got a nest egg when they didn't and stuff.
And you certainly don't have to be an investment expert or take a lot of risk in that regard.
Right.
You're looking at long-term, you don't have to take a lot of risk, and you can get, when you get that match, you get an automatic, you get an automatic return on your money with the match.
So anyway, it is something I hope, hope we would at least administratively look at and stuff, right?
Mr. Chair, I think it's, I want to commend the committee for, for the work. And I think it's important that, that you're doing the right thing. The committee's helping out and recommending and so forth. And the fact also that this supplements a retirement in the future. Before you know it, you know, you've been here 20 years or 25 years, and, and if you start saving from the beginning, some of us do or don't, then in 20, 25 years, you have a good nest, you know, to supplement your retirement and other investments that you have. So I think it's important that, that education is so important to our, for our employees to, to understand. But anyway, I think it's, the committee's doing a good job. And Patty, you're doing an excellent presentation.
I think it's a good idea to do that education, you know, for people who may not be as sophisticated. I'm just learning about what the double up is right now. Sounds like a poker game, but I think it would be helpful to do as much as we can to help those to have a better understanding of the benefits that they can receive.
My understanding is that at initial new employee orientation, they will give them some background. But people that have been here a while, maybe haven't, didn't do it right away, maybe need a refresher, those types of things. That, that's really our goal, is to try to, instead of having 75%, we'd like to be in the 90%, you know, 90% participation rates, if we could, so.
I appreciate the work of the committee, too. I think to hear from those who did respond was valuable. And to add from our plan, folks, the education piece will be a great addition. And to survey that in another couple of years or so, after some of that education has been out there, to see how the employees feel about it. But it is hard to get young people to think 20, 30 years from now and think about what their needs may be financially. And to have such an opportunity through the employer to have matching funds, to have an investment portfolio, it's, it's when you're, I certainly didn't think of it when I was my early employments. So good work and good end product, I think. Thank you.
Mr. Powers? Thank you, Chair Bennett. Yeah, I think the other thing that's interesting is in the survey is those positive responses, when you think about a lot of people who respond to a survey are not necessarily happy. And so to get that positive feedback, I think speaks well of it. We also heard more education, but they were also pleased with the education they were getting from Fidelity. So I think that's a big positive. They just wanted more of it. I think that speaks well of the partner that we have in Fidelity. And just a word, too, about this whole process. I think it was a very healthy process. Another committee did an RFP to identify a consultant, and they, and they got an excellent one. And so the consultants has done, Vincent has done the analysis on this process, but as I understand it, he's going to continue to give an independent evaluation of the plan performance and options quarterly to the committee, which I think is also a very healthy process. So great work by Patty and Paul and Kelly and the whole committee.
Great. Any other questions or comments? So we need to...
I'd like to make a motion every...
I have a motion for the recommended action. I'll second it. And we're ready to vote. And that passed.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So we are now at our 1:30. And we have a whole lot of sewer charges here. So I think Ready's going to be up and, and stay up here, right? So items 55 through 59.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Bennett, Board members, Mr. Powers. I'm Janice Turner from Public Works Agency. And the item before you today is a public hearing to continue service charges for the property owners on Camp Chape Road in Foster Park. The service charges are used to fund road maintenance types of services, repairs, potholes, cracked ceiling, and that type of activities. This is a non-county road, so the property owners are required to provide the, the funding. And with that, if you have any questions?
It moves the recommended action.
There are, I know areas, certainly in my district, of private roads that are greatly in need of assistance. I'm just wondering, how big of a service area is this? And how, was it generated from the residents to, to receive this?
Yes, this has been established for 40-some years. If there's additional information, I have Chuck Alvarez, who might be able to provide some additional information in terms of, are you asking how to...
I'm just wondering what the history of how this was brought together, was it the residents came before the county and requested it, or...
I do not know exactly. It was in 1965, I believe, that it happened. But we do have all the records in Public Works, and we can provide that information to you.
My understanding is that the progressive residents of District 1, once again, once again, realized the wisdom of working together. And I, my understanding was it was the residents that, that came together, and there was some kind of recognition, but I don't, I don't...
We can certainly provide that information.
But your residents, but it could be done again. It, it could be done. I mean, residents could create the separate district.
It would be interesting to know, because since then, we've had Prop 218, for example, which guys have voted. And I don't know if all that was in play back then, but it would be interesting to know, if it doesn't take too much effort.
We'll do the research for you.
Thank you.
Great. All right. That motion has passed. And item 56, Oak Park.
And that would be me also. Good afternoon again. The item before us on Oak Park is, again, a public hearing regarding the continuation of service charges, again, relating to street-related type services, street sweeping, landscape maintenance. The item was presented to the Oak Park MAC a few months ago in terms of reviewing the budget and also the continuation of the service charges, and they support this item. And with that being said, if you have any questions?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Do appreciate Pam coming to the MAC and presenting the information and answering all those tough questions.
Yeah, thank you. I actually intended to recognize her, and I forgot. So thank you, Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. And also just to having that, you know, good input, really, from the residents, I think they had some good questions, and we made some adjustments. So it's good to see.
And, and that's me again. Again, this is a public hearing to continue service charges. This is in specifically for the areas of Casa Canajo and Lynn Ranch. And it's relating to street sweeping services, that the property owners have agreed to be assessed for those types of activities. And there's no change in the service rates. And again, it is to allow us to put these service charges on the property tax bill. And if you have any questions? Because CSA 14 really is all the unincorporated area, because it relates to street lighting. But this is specific just for those two geographical areas. Okay, thank you.
Item 58 and 59. So sewer, sewer charges, ready? Supervisor Floyd's favorite item. I'll be happy to vote for it.
Good afternoon, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Ready Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. Janice Turner presented three items which are related to the streets and the street maintenance issue. I'll be presenting the next three items, which are all related to sewer service charges and sewer rates. Item number 58 is a public hearing for the proposed sewer charges for the community of North Coast. This particular CSA 29 provides sanitation services to Solomar Beach, Farrier Beach, Muscle Shoals, and Sea Cliff. All of the sewage from this North Coast community is discharged to the city of Ventura for treatment and disposal. We are not recommending any changes to the current sewer service charges or sewer standby charges. However, we're recommending that your board adopt the resolution of a staff report, which will authorize the collection of these charges as part of the annual general county tax roll. The required legal notices were published by the clerk of your board. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Thank you very much. This is one area we've never had anybody complain about. They just, they just take the sewer rate, they're happy to have it because it's really needed. They'd have lots of problems without it. So, well, I'm just going to make the motion, but I'm happy to have, let's go forward. All right, item 59, ready?
Item 59 is also a public hearing for County Service Area Number 34. CSA 34 provides sanitation services to the community of El Rio, Strickland Track, and also the commercial properties along Beatty Street and Montgomery Avenue in the community of El Rio. As you are aware, this is outside the city of Oxnard city limits. All of the sewage from the CSA 34 is discharged to the city of Oxnard Sewer Collection System for treatment and disposal. As your board is aware, a few years, a couple of years ago, CSA 34 constructed a new sewer collection system. And I'm happy to report to you that 1,375 septic systems have been abandoned as part of this project. And the reason CSA 34 constructed the sewer system is to help the property owner to comply with the septic tank prohibition. And also abandonment of the septic systems improves the local groundwater quality in the Oxnard Four Bay. It removes as much as 275,000 pounds of nitrates every year from the groundwater basin. This is a great benefit for the water quality improvements and also for the... This is a great benefit for the water quality improvements and also for the property owners. We are not recommending any changes to the sewer service charges at this time. We are recommending that your board adopt the resolution in our staff report, which will authorize CSA 34 to collect sewer stand, sewer service charges and also installment payments with a sewer connection fee to the city of Oxnard. That concludes my verbal presentation. I'm available to take any questions you have.
You have seven minutes for questions, because you don't have anything else until 2 o'clock.
Doing a great job, Motion to agree.
How's that line in SOMAS going?
It's coming along. We just heard from USDA, this is about the water system. Supervisor Fox is asking me about water system improvements in SOMAS area for Water Work District Number 19. We just heard from USDA engineers approving our plans. So, we expect to go out to bid in about a couple of months with construction beginning maybe three to four months from now.
Good, good, good. Thank you.
We're going to need to work on the El Rio water pressure, too. It's the other concern that we might have, for the future. Good work.
For the mutual water companies, you mean?
Yeah.
All right. So, take about five minutes here, board members, whatever you need to do. And then, we'll, we're going to hit it promptly at 2:00, because I want to be done at 2:01 and tell Supervisor Floyd that we finished one minute after our last time.
Thank you. Update you to your office. And we are hoping that in few months, we'll be able to come up with recommendations. And after we negotiate the agreement with Waring Water Company, we'll bring that item to your board for consideration.
Do we have any, go ahead.
Regarding the sewer system, as your board is aware, we have recently completed the new wastewater treatment plant. And we are not recommending any sewer rate increase at this time. However, we are recommending that you adopt, adopt the resolution of our staff report. That concludes my verbal presentation.
Do we have anybody that wants, that wants to speak on this item? And just let the record show that we've, for all of these items that we've gone through, items 55 through 59, we've had nobody in the audience here to speak, no cards submitted.
Move and recommend action.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. And we made it?
Thank you, Chair.
Let the record reflect that at 2:03, we ended the meeting.
Thanks, Ready. Good work, Ready.
Now, we go back into closed session. There'll be no announcement out of closed session. We'll adjourn from closed session. Thank you.